Good morning, Alan.
Hi, Asif.
How are you, Alan?
How are you doing?
Doing fine, sir, thank you.
Good morning, Asif. Good morning, Thomas.
Hi, Paul.
Hi, Paul.
Hello, everyone. It's nice to join the other panel today.
Yes, hello, Thomas. Long time no see. Hope you're doing well.
Good, Ron. Yes, thank you. You too.
Thank you. Are we missing Nadini? Okay. Alex, we can go? Good morning, ladies and gentlemen. Due to COVID-19, Committee of Adjustment public hearings are being conducted virtually by electronic means through WebEx Webinar, an online digital platform streamed on the Toronto City Planning YouTube channel. Participants who registered in advance will be able to make their presentations to the committee using WebEx Webinar, which is moderated by city staff. Anyone wishing to view the hearing can watch it on YouTube. Participants who have registered in advance will be connecting with their computer, tablet, smartphone, or telephone, and have the option of participating via video or audio only. All participants are automatically muted on entry. When your item is called, each participant is unmuted by city staff, one person at a time. We ask that you mute your devices until you are called on to speak. Those participating by video appearance will be temporarily upgraded to panelist when your item is being held. During this time, your camera will be enabled. You will only be visible during your five-minute allotted speaking time. At all other times, your video will be disabled and you are reinstated as an attendee. Committee of Adjustment staff will share presentations submitted in accordance with the written submission deadline. Members of the public and applicants are not allowed to use share screen or any other panelist controls during a video appearance. City staff will remove you from the panelist role if you fail to respect this instruction. For all those who are waiting online, please ensure that you have called in with the phone number that you originally registered with. If you call in with a different number, you will not be able to speak on the item. To ensure audio clarity, I suggest that you do not use the speakerphone function on your telephones. We acknowledge that the land we are meeting on is the traditional territory of many nations, including the Mississaugas of the Credit, the Anishna Bay, the Chipewa, the Haudenosaunee, and the Wendat peoples, and is now home to many diverse First Nations Inuit and Métis peoples. We also acknowledge that Toronto was covered by Treaty 13 with the Mississaugas of the Credit. In accordance with Sections 45 and 53 of the Planning Act 1990 as amended, this meeting of the Committee of Adjustment of the City of Toronto was called to order. My name is Alan Smithies, and I will chair today's meeting. Joining us on the pan today are Tom Klassen, Asif Khan, Paul Kidd, and Nadini Sankar Peralta. City staff are also present: Simon Lamb, Sam Mozanyani, Alex Chu, and Chris Pereira. The Committee of Adjustment considers applications for variances from the provisions of the zoning bylaw that apply to property, permission to extend or alter lawful nonconforming uses, and consent to sever property to create new lots. Anyone attending today who wants to receive a copy of the committee's decision must submit a written request for a decision by email. Please ensure that you include your name, address, and email address because Committee of Adjustment and the T-Lab will be sending notifications and appeal updates by email. If you do not agree with the committee's decision, it may be appealed to the Toronto local appeal body, T-Lab, or in some limited circumstances, to the Ontario Land Tribunal. Appeal instructions are set out at the bottom of the committee's decision. Hearing procedure is as follows. I will call each item in the order listed on the agenda. Where an application is uncontested, the agent or applicant will proceed with their presentation if desired. When the committee does not require a presentation, applicants are to advise the chair should they wish to speak on the item. The committee may ask questions and undertake the matter into the committee for a decision. Each speaker, including the applicant or agent, is given a maximum of five minutes to address the committee. I will comment when you are reaching the five-minute limit. When addressing the committee, please state clearly your name and address. Please remember to confine your remarks to the matters described in the application. The applicant or agent proceeds first and will make their presentation to the committee. Please note that the committee may not entertain revisions to proposals at the hearing today. To ensure that a revised application is accurate and that all those entitled to notice of the application are informed of the changes, the committee may decide to defer the application if it is substantially revised. Then, individuals either in support or opposed to the application are invited to speak. Committee members may ask questions of each speaker after they have finished their presentation. When all speakers are finished, the applicant or agent has an opportunity to rebut only those issues that were raised by the previous speakers. This marks the end of discussion on the item. The application is then taken into committee for a decision. I note that we have no confirmation of last-minute meetings to adopt. Are there any panel members who have a conflict of interest to declare? I'd just like to note that I do have a conflict of interest on item number one, 3,000 Dufferin Street. My daughter is employed by the agent's solicitor, so I will bow out from that particular hearing.
Mr. Chair, can we just verify we can have another member take over?
Yes. Can I have some... I will need someone to temporarily take over the chair's duties while I excuse myself from that particular item. Can I have someone to volunteer for that particular duty? Thank you, Ms. Sankar. There no one else who has conflict of interest to declare? No. Okay, thank you. I have, and there are no closing files to deal with. I note that we have, in our morning session, we have two deferral requests. We'll deal with those now. I have item number seven.
Mr. Chair, item four has requested for deferral as well.
Pardon me?
Item four has requested for deferral.
Oh, thank you, Mr. Chu. Item number four, that is 213 Homewood Avenue. We'll deal with that one first. Item number four, 213 Homewood Avenue. I have two people registered for that particular application. The agent is Pavlo Turco. Are you there, sir?
Yes, I am.
Hello, sir.
Yes, I am. Can you hear me?
Yes, I can hear you. Can I get your full name and address, please?
My name is Pavlo Turco, Mississauga, Ontario.
Okay, thank you, sir. Before you start, I note that there was a report from City Planning which was recommending deferral due to an incorrect description of the project. And I was just asking if that's the reason you're asking for a deferral?
Also, a local councillor asked for a deferral as well, so we need more time to consult with him and neighbors.
Okay, thank you. Does the committee have any questions of the speaker? There being none, there's one person registered to speak. I'll just ask what their thoughts are on this deferral. I have an Ernest Tambury. Are you there, sir?
Yeah, 215 Homewood Avenue.
Yes, can I get your full name and address, please, sir?
Yeah, Ernest Tambury, 215 Homewood Avenue.
Okay, thank you, sir. Just before we start, you've heard the applicant's requesting a deferral. There's an error on the notice that needs to be correct, and he'd like to defer that to correct that discrepancy. So do you have an objection to a deferral?
I'm not sure if I have any choice. I mean, we have to deal with it sooner or later. But obviously, I submitted a photograph of what the existing construction expansion that took place four years ago.
Okay, sir. Sir, we're just dealing with the matter of a deferral. Do you object to the deferral?
No, I don't. I mean, we'll deal with the matter at the next hearing.
Okay, thank you. Does the committee have any questions of the speaker? There being none, could I get a motion on the deferral request, please? Mr. Kidd?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I'd like to put forward a motion to defer the application signed by to allow the applicant to revise his application and to consult with neighbors.
Thank you, Mr. Kidd. Someone to second that? Mr. Klassen seconds. All those in favor? That motion carries unanimously. Sir, your application's been deferred to the next available meeting so that you can correct your application and to consult with affected neighbors. Thank you, sir. I will go to...
Thank you.
We have... The next one on the list is item number seven, 6B Stewart Avenue.
Hey, it's Glenn Rubenoff.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Rubenoff. Can I get your address as well, please? Thank you.
Yes, it's 18 Gloucester Lane, Toronto, Ontario.
Okay, thank you, sir. I just wanted to ask... I understand you're asking for a deferral, sir. I just wanted to ask if you've had the opportunity. There's reports on file with your application from urban forestry. There's some comments from City Planning in their report of the Fourth of August, which was recommending that there would be some changes, modifications to your application. I just wanted to ask, sir, if you've had the opportunity to review those reports?
Yes, I have. And the reason for our deferral today is because my client's been speaking with the neighbor and coming to some agreements with regards to minimizing impacts. So that's what the reason for the deferral is, to put an agreement in place and to come back to committee, hopefully with their support.
Okay, thank you. I note that there's no one else registered to speak on your application. I'll just ask, does the committee have any questions of the speaker? There being none, could I get a motion on this deferral request, please? Mr. Kidd?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I'd like to put forward a motion to defer the application to allow the applicant to allow the applicant to meet with the neighbors and revise their application.
Thank you, Mr. Kidd. Someone to second that? Ms. Sankar seconds. All those in favor? That motion carries unanimously. Sir, your application's been deferred to the next available meeting so that you can meet with the affected neighbors, and I'll suggest you meet with City Planning as well. Thank you as well.
Yes, thank you.
Thank you. Now on item number sixteen, 25 Haddington Avenue. I have one person registered to speak. That's Jonathan Benskowski. Are you there, sir?
Hi, Mr. Chair.
Yes, thank you, sir. I had a... Just before we start, sir, I just wanted to ask, there is a report, a recommended condition from urban forestry, and there's also a report from Transportation Services dated the Fourth of August, which I'm sure you know recommends refusing your proposed driveway location. I understand you're asking for a deferral, sir. Can you give us the reasons for the deferral?
Yeah, we've engaged a traffic safety specialist to review the location of the stop sign, and we will be coming back with, hopefully, not a revised report, but support of transportation based upon the report we're obtaining. If not, it would be a revised proposal.
Okay, thank you, sir. Does the committee have any questions of the speaker? There being none, could I get a motion on this application, please? On this deferral request? Mr. Klassen?
Yes, Mr. Chair. I'd like to move that this application can be deferred and so that the applicant can either make changes or obtain additional information, and it will be signed by. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Klassen. Someone to second that motion? Mr. Kidd seconds. All those in favor? Motion carries unanimously. Sir, your application's been deferred to the next available meeting so that you can revise your application, and I also suggest you discuss it further with Transportation Services. Thank you very much. We're back to our... We are back to our regular agenda, and we are on item number one, which is 3,000 Dufferin Street. I have to excuse myself. Ms. Sankar, if you could take over the chair. Thank you very much.
Sure, thank you, mister. So this application is an application that requests consent to sever the property into three separate lots. So I'm going to draw on my colleagues at the staff level there to help me out with whom is actually representing this severance, this application.
The agent that's registered to speak for this application is Maggie Basani. Maggie, you've been unmuted.
Okay, this is Maggie Basani, 181 Bay Street.
For that. So this application shows that there is a staff report with an updated staff report that just gives general recommendations. For that, have you had a chance to look at the updated staff report? Ms. Basani?
Oh, thank you. I was muted there. Good morning. I hope you can see me as well. Yes, I have reviewed the staff report.
Okay, great. And just in addition to that, there is a July 8th engineering report that has some specific recommendations on file. Did you happen to have a look at that as well?
Yes, I have also reviewed the ECS report, and we have no concerns with the
Forestry?
And I have reviewed forestry as well, and they have no concerns or objections.
Okay, that's great. There is one objection on file that was sort of sent in by a debutante, but I will also ask our staff if there is anyone else besides Ms. Basani that's wishing to speak to this application today.
Ms. Chair, there's three other speakers that are registered to speak. The first individual that's registered to speak is Sarah Bashir. However, she is not appearing on the call. I'll unmute the second person that's registered to speak, which... Sorry? Oh.
Ms. Chair, I believe we're going to have the applicant present first.
Sorry, I can't hear anything from the Madam Chair, but I see her speaking.
I'm very sorry. I had myself muted, and I was talking, and I didn't think anyone heard me, I think. So I was saying, yes, indeed. You have five minutes to present to us on the application, and then we'll hear from the debutantes, in which case you'll have a chance to respond as well to them. So go ahead.
Thank you, Madam Chair. And if I could ask staff to pull up Slide 4 from the presentation package that was submitted? That is a copy of a... It's a slide presentation package that was recently submitted. If I could get that on screen. Sorry, my apologies. That might not be the right package. It has a cover page just with the address on it.
Staff are just pulling up the presentation right now. You could start your five minutes for speaking. While staff
Great, thank you very much. So before I get into the detailed consent application further, I do want to provide some relevant background context to this application. The site is the subject of a rezoning and plan of subdivision applications that were filed back in 2017, which proposed to develop two new buildings on the property, which I call, and you'll hear me refer to as Building A and Building B, while retaining the existing apartment building on the site, which I refer to as Buildings C. And these three buildings are supposed to be all connected by a shared underground garage. In late 2019, the owner and the city reached a settlement on the appeals of those applications, and subsequently, the Ontario Land Tribunal approved the settlement, subject to certain preconditions. And since that time in late 2019, my client worked with city staff to clear those preconditions. And in March of this year, the final form of the zoning bylaw amendment was approved, and now is in full force and effect. And in April of this year, the tribunal also issued draft plan of subdivision approval. Oh, and thank you very much. I'll pause there. That is the right presentation, if you don't mind turning to page four. Thank you very much. And the plan of subdivision will create blocks for a new public street, which on the screen, on the west side of the site, there is a proposed north-south public street. And the subdivision will also create the block for a public park on the site, which is located at the southwest corner of the site on your screen, as well as the... It will also create a road winding block along Dufferin Street. And as noted earlier, the consent application proposes to sever each of Buildings A, B, and C, such that each building will be on its own lot. And given that the site will function as a campus of buildings in an integrated development, we are proposing that permanent easements to be established to allow for shared vehicular access over driveways, drive aisles, use of the underground garage parking ramp, as well as pedestrian access over the shared walkways, and which you see on your screen. There are a number of shared walkways that penetrate through the site. The permanent easements will also allow for shared loading space and garbage staging access. And in particular, this is to allow Building C, the existing building, to use the internalized loading and garbage staging area in Building B, as currently the existing Building C does not have an enclosed or integrated loading space. So that was something as part of the rezoning process that staff wanted to see. And then finally, as part of the set of the permanent easement, it will also allow for surface drainage over the east-west driveway on the north end of the site, because the surface drainage goes from east to west. So a permanent easement will also be in place to allow for that. I note that the site servicing has been designed such that each proposed parcel will have their own sanitary water and storm connection, so no permanent easements will be needed in that regard, and that was, you know, important to engineering staff. So we worked with them to ensure that condition would be met. In addition to the permanent easements, temporary easements are also proposed to be established to reflect the construction phasing plan for the new development, to ensure that the existing operations of the sites can continue in the interim. And that is because Building B, which is shaded in green on your screen, has to be constructed first to allow for a new underground garage ramp to be constructed before the existing ramp, which is currently under where you see Building A along Dufferin Street, before that can be demolished. And the other temporary easements will allow for vehicular pedestrian access in the interim during the construction phasing. I note that the consent application will not have any impact whatsoever on the conveyance of the parkland dedication, the public street, or the road winding, because these have all been secured as part of the rezoning and subdivision approvals. And I acknowledge through the ECS recommended conditions that any technical revisions necessary to the draft plan of subdivision conditions will be made and secured.
And then Ms. Basani, you have 15 seconds to summarize, please.
Oh, and I will leave it there. Perfect timing. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Okay, thank you. So now I'll ask the members of the panel, do you have any questions for Ms. Basani at this time? Yes, Mr. Khan.
Thank you, Madam Chair. My question to Ms. Basani is, Building A, lot frontage is 26.62 meter? Correct?
Let me just... The building frontage... The building frontage of Building A... Oh, yeah, the 26.62. Yes, that is... I think there actually... Are you reading, sir, the notice? The notice of the hearing. I just want to make sure I'm looking at the... Because I think there seems to be a typo between the notice that was issued with the description of the lot frontage and then the description that was in the staff report.
How high is this building and how many stories it has?
Oh, Building A is an approved 12-story building.
Thank you.
Okay. Any other questions from panel members before we proceed to the debutantes? Okay, seeing that there's no more questions, I'll turn it back to Mr. Pereira. You had mentioned that there is a Sarah Bashir, who's the speaker number one, that she was not on the line yet.
Madam Chair, Sarah Bashir is not on the line. I could move on to the next person registered to speak, which is Mayor Toshoe O'Brien.
Okay.
I haven't asked to speak. I've just asked to be present.
Okay, so you're... Sorry, just if I can get your name and address, and then we can address your concerns about speaking afterwards, please.
Maire O'Brien, M-A-I-R-E-O-br-i-e-n.
Okay, and Ms. O'Brien, you don't want to speak today? You just
No, I don't. No, I just wanted to sit in. Thank you.
Okay, thank you very much. Mr. Pereira, who's the third speaker there?
The third person registered to speak is Grace Masalas. You have been unmuted, Grace.
Okay, Ms. Masalas, are you there?
Yeah, thank you. It's Grace Masalas, and I live across the street, 29 Playfair Avenue. I just want to know, when will this work commence?
So what we'll do is... That's the only question that you
No, no, I have more. I just want to
Okay, so perhaps maybe if you can ask that question and proceed to the other questions, we're noting it, and Ms. Basani is noting it to respond.
So is there going to be a widening of the road on Playfair Avenue? Or no? In front of the building?
So a widening of the road. I mean, these are questions. Is there any concerns that you have with respect to
Yes. My concern is building these buildings. Right now, we're having major sewage problems. Like every six months, I have to call the city because the water is plugging up in my home. This added all these extra two buildings with a lot of more people coming in and out. It's going to create more sewage problems. We have a lot of small children on the street because there's two schools, elderly people. Creating a road, because I understand there's going to be a road created on the west side of the building, B, I think it is. So is that... Like, are there going to be two main roads to go into the building, into these buildings? Because right now, on one on Dufferin, the main road, is there another road from Playfair Avenue? Or is that going to be Or is that going to be only one main road? To go into the buildings?
Okay, is there any other questions that you may have or comments at this time?
My only concern is that, like, basically the sewage problems that it's, and a lot of elderly and small children. Crossing the roads, you know, extra traffic.
Okay.
It's a safety concern.
Okay, thank you so much for those concerns. With respect to the sewage problem, this may actually be handled. By construction, but I will still permit Ms. Vissani to respond to this. If there's, you know, any other concerns, we're going to move on now. I think, Mr. Pereira, there's no other speakers, and Ms. Bashir still has not logged in, right?
Madam Chair, there's no other speakers on the line.
Okay, so then we'll, I'll ask the panel if they have any other questions for Ms. O'Brien, I mean, Ms. Marcellus, who just spoke. There being no other questions, I'll turn it back to Ms. Vissani. To, I know that there are some of those concerns may not be, you know, addressed at this time, it may be during the construction phase. But as best as you can, if there's any way that you can respond to Ms. Marcellus's questions, that would be helpful.
Thank you, Madam Chair, and thank you to the earlier deputy for the question. So in terms of serving capacity, sewage, sanitary water. I, I can advise about as part of the subdivision and rezoning process. Extensive engineering reports were submitted to city staff. And demonstrating that, that either that there was sufficient capacity, or where there wasn't, that the necessary upgrades. To the infrastructure would, would be required, and the infrastructure upgrades have been secured as part of the zoning and subdivision process. So I can advise that there will be no capacity issues to support the new proposed building. And, and in terms of the, the road question, there will be two points of access to the site. One off of Deffern Street to the north of the site, as well as to the west of the site off of Playfair. There will be a new driveway access as well. Although the requirement is for my client to dedicate these lands on the west side of the site to become a public street. In the interim, it will not be a public street or dedicated as a public street just yet, because currently. It won't lead to anywhere, but it was important to city staff that the potential to dedicate it as a public street, it would be preserved. If and when, at a time where the neighboring buildings to the west and north also redeveloped, then there's an option of potential. For a public street to, to extend and provide greater permeability within this larger block. In terms of road widening, it is only along Deffern Street. And then finally, the other question of when work will commence. At this time, work is not going to be commencing anytime soon. I can't advise the exact date. There will still be a future site plan approval process that my client has to go through before construction posts start. So as, right now, I, I, we don't have a set date. And I, finally, I do want to note that as part of the Section thirty-seven agreement that has been entered into and registered on title. There is a requirement for the owner to establish a detailed tenant communication and construction mitigation plan that will address matters such as noise. Debris, construction hours, that's quite typical, that that will be dealt with through the site plan approval process. And that also, I think, addresses the concern that was raised. In the, the letter that was written into the committee prior to today. That there will be a process that will, you know, that will set out how construction mitigation will, will be facilitated.
Okay, thank you so much, Ms. Vissani. I'll ask committee members, do you have any final questions or comments that you'd like to make at this time? There being none, we'll move into a motion for this application, noting that there is. An engineering report with specific recommendations for street conditions, as well as the staff report with some standard conditions of August second. That being said, can I, panel members, can I get a motion? Yes, Mr. Kidd.
Thank you, Madam Chair. It, it appears to me that the applicant has worked closely with city planning to come up with an appropriate proposal for this property. I'd like to put forward a motion to accept the consent application. Subject to the conditions set out in the. The Transportation Services and Engineering and Construction Services report dated July the eighth, twenty-twenty-two. And also. Subject to the conditions set out, the standard conditions set out in the planning staff report dated August second, twenty-twenty-two. And you mentioned forestry conditions, I, I, I didn't see forestry conditions there, but. Are there forestry conditions on this?
Actually, I made a mistake. I had it noted as number one here, and I, it was item number two, so my apologies that you're.
Okay, okay, that's, that's my proposal.
Okay, so, thank you, Mr. Kidd. We have a motion for Mr. Kidd. To approve this application, subject to the transportation and engineering report of July eighth. As well as the staff report and the standard conditions that's noted in their August second submission. Can I get a seconder for that? Yes, we've got Mr. Klassen, who seconds that motion, all in favor. Unanimously approved. Ms. Vissani, your application to sever into three lots has been unanimously approved. And I'll ask Mr. Smithies to assume his role, and thank you.
Okay.
Thank you very much, Ms. Sankar. We will now proceed to the next item on our agenda, that is item number two. Five oh five Ballyall Street. I have. Six people registered to speak. The agent is an Ian Andres, are you there?
Sir, it's Tay Rook, planner for the owner of the property at eighty-one Cameron.
Okay, thank you, sir.
Mr. Chair, item number two is eighty-one Cameron Avenue.
Oh, I'm sorry, my mistake. Item number two. Thank you, Mr. Khan. Eighty-one Cameron Avenue. I'm sorry, Mr. Rook, I'm sorry about that. I have.
No, sir, no problem, sir.
I have two people registered to speak. Just before we start, sir. I note that we, there are a number of staff reports here in connection with your application. We have a urban forestry report, which recommends refusal. We have a development engineering report dated the seventh of June. Which has no objections subject to standard consent conditions. There's a heritage planning report dated the seventeenth of May of this year that has no objections to your application. There is a report from council, a letter from councillor Fillion dated the eleventh of August, which recommends refusing. And we have a report from city planning dated the fourth of August. Which has no objections to your severance application, subject to standard consent conditions. But it does have recommendations for modifications, pardon me, there's modifications to. The approval for your requested variances for parts one and two. And a recommended condition for part three. So I wanted to ask her if you've had the opportunity to review those reports.
Yes, sir, I have had the opportunity to review the reports, and just to be clear, and just to notify committee. That variance number six is the variance of question to be modified. That's related to parts one and two for eighty-one Cameron. Variance number six for that minor variance application will be revised to seven point nine-nine meters.
Okay, hang, hang on a second, sir. Are you proposing to make changes to the variance requests for parts one and two?
Correct, variance number six.
Sir, can you start from the beginning there and just read those changes into the record, so that we make sure we've got them all?
Sure. So this, the variance change being requested is for file number A three zero three hundred twenty-two NY, which is for parts one and two. And it's related to variance number six, and it's for the maximum height of all exterior sidewalls. It is shown as being proposed as eight point one-two meters, that has been revised down to seven point nine-nine meters.
Okay.
And that's the change that city staff had requested, and that was a result of conversations with city staff.
Okay, yes, thank you very much, sir. If you could. Make your presentation to the committee. I guess, just, actually, also, you may want to focus as well on the. Planning report, as well as the urban forestry report with respect to the potential removal of a city-owned blue spruce tree. So if you could make your presentation, sir?
Sure. The application before you today is for a two-story, a single detached house as a result of a consent and minor variance application. There's currently a one-story detached dwelling on the subject site, it's right now, and that will be, the property will be severed to facilitate two new dwellings. The proposal itself is to create new two lots at frontages of seven point four-seven meters, respectively. And if you look into supporting materials that was sent to the committee. On page two, there is a map showing the various lot frontages that already exist within the area. And what you find here is that you have a total of approximately forty, forty lots within that immediate block. And nineteen of those properties are seven point four, seven point six-two meters or less. So the official plans speaks to the prevailing character of the immediate block and also the overall block, or overall neighborhood. And in this particular case, this proposal itself represents the. Immediate and also the overall development, development pattern that's found within this neighborhood. The consent itself. Has been done in a way, and the proposed dwellings itself have been done in a way where it's respectful to the adjacent dwellings in terms of heightened massing. And also with respect to side, to side yard setbacks. What you find is, is that this neighborhood constitutes of various lot frontages and various lot areas. And what you see is, is that this is a representation or a pattern of mimicking the pattern of development that already exists within the area. Pardon me. You have lot, you have. Variances related to, to both lots, for lot coverage, lot frontage, to lot area. Also to the exterior sidewall heights and also side yard setbacks. And what you find is, is that from a side yard setback perspective, is that you have dwellings that already exist within the immediate and within the broader area. That don't meet the side yard setback requirements. And what we've done is, is that we've placed the closer side yard setbacks in between the two new homes, as opposed to creating a closer side back to the adjacent properties. The adjacent properties will have a setback of point nine meters on both sides, to the west and to the east lot lines. And as a result of that, it provides for additional space and additional buffer between the two properties. Furthermore, when you look at the differences in, if you look at the front elevations. What we, the applicant has done is to provide for a different architectural style in terms of roof lines, and also to weigh the manner in which these houses present to the street. You have a pitch roof on the one side, and you have a slightly shallower pitch roof on the other. And this was done intentionally to ensure, to provide for more architectural articulation, to provide for more interest, and to provide an enhancement to the existing streetscape. As the chair mentioned, there is comments from the urban forestry department with regards to one single tree located at the front of the property. That tree, it's actually is, is on our, is on the subject site's property, and if you look at the survey, majority of it, actually about eighty percent of that tree is on the subject site. So I, I'm not quite sure why city, why the city forestry department indicated as a city's street tree. But irrespective of that, the Arbor's, an Arbor's report was done, conducted for this property. What it showed was, is that the tree was on a lean, the roots are being exposed, and it causes a bit of a danger because there is a lean to the tree. Nonetheless, the, as I indicated before, the tree is eighty percent on the subject site. And it isn't a, it, it's in a condition where it could be potential hazard to the streetscape and to the potential property itself. You also note that planning staff have done and conducted an intensive review of the subject area and the lotting patterns that exist within the neighborhood. And they've came to the same conclusion as I did, that this is a meritorious application from both a severance and from a minor variance perspective. They recognize. The prevailing character, prevailing building, lotting pattern within this immediate block is one in which the, that lot frontages and lot areas. Have, have seven point six meters or less, and this is what is, the proposal is consistent with that lotting pattern. I do believe that there's no concerns from engineering, heritage, TRCA, from any other departments. And this is what I believe to be a, an appropriate proposal. An appropriate proposal that has been deployed appropriately on the subject site. And has minimal impacts and reflective of the character of development that's found throughout this neighborhood. I'm sure there's going to be further questions from other deputates, but those are my submissions, and I'll be glad to answer any questions at this time.
Thank you, sir. Does the committee have any questions of the speaker? Mr. Khan?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Sir, my question is, is it a semi-detached house?
No, these are single detached homes.
Pardon me?
Single detached homes.
Single detached, thank you.
Any further questions of the speaker? There being none, we'll go to the next speaker on the list. I have a Marshall Mednick, are you there, sir?
Marshall, you've been unmuted.
Oh, thank you, you can hear me.
Yes, I can, I can hear you. Can we get your full name and address, please?
Sure, it's Marshall Mednick, M.E.D.N.I.C.K., seventy-four Cameron Avenue, Toronto, Ontario, M two N, one E two.
Okay, thank you, sir. If you'd like to give us your thoughts on this application?
Yeah, for sure. I live directly across from this street. And I guess I'm kind of objecting to this proposal primarily because. A, I just don't think it's going to look proper to have two houses facing me like that. I find the setbacks are too close. There was a couple houses built down the street from me on, what is it, I think it was seventy. I'm seventy-four, so it was like eighty-two Cameron, I think, they built two houses with this tree, very similar. They're, they're built too close together, the eaves troughs are on top of each other. I don't think this tree is, you know, that they would need to be taken down. Seems like a fairly healthy tree, I don't think it's, it's, I don't think it's a safety issue for anybody, you know, they come and. Trim the limbs every so often, so I just don't think it's in, in. And, I just don't think it fits when, when, in, when the neighborhood, I know east of Botham, that's where it's all been zoned, but. West of, of Botham, there's been a few, you know, splits been allowed, but. I just, I just don't think it's appropriate. I think we're going to lose street parking as well, we're gonna, there's very limited street parking right now. So I don't think that's also a worthy consideration to split this property.
Okay, thank you, sir. Does the committee have any questions of the speaker? There being none, we'll go to the next person on the list. I have Christine Pereira, are you there?
Yes, I'm here.
Yes, can I get your full name and address, please?
My full name is Christina Pereira, I'm at twelve oh two Roseland Avenue.
Okay, thank you. If you'd like to give us your thoughts on this application?
Mr. Chair, I believe Christina was registered to speak regarding item five and not item.
A row, yeah, not this, I was going to say, I'm not registered for this Cameron address.
Okay, I had, okay, I'm sorry, I had you down here for, somebody had you down here for. I'm sorry, my mistake, my mistake. I apologize, Ms. Pereira, thank you very much. We'll call you back up when your item is called. We'll go back to, I've never, other persons registered to speak, we'll go back to the agent, are you there, sir?
Yes, sir, I'm here.
If you could, you heard the comments from Mr. Mednick, if you'd like to reply?
Sure, sir. Mr. Mednick's property is actually ten point three-three meters and three-six meters in terms of lot frontage, and you can see that on the map that was.
and you can see that on the map that was provided to you in the supporting materials on page two. And immediately adjacent to his property are houses that are seven point six two meters in terms of lot frontages. And it also immediately, uh, one house removed from, to the west of our subject site, there are houses that are seven point six two meters in terms of lot frontages as well. So the planned context or the existing context is one in which where there's lot frontages that are similar in terms of what we're proposing on this particular site. You'll note that on the map that this is a bit of a shallower lot on the aerial context map because the properties to the south have a deeper lot and for some reason it's been divided up and, uh, to provide for a longer lot on the southern side. However, irrespective of that, in terms of lot frontage and what you perceive from the street, it would be no different from, uh, from other houses that are found uh, on the north side or on the south side of Cameron Avenue within the immediate block. What you also find that is, is that this proposal, in terms of the way the houses have been deployed, has been very respectful in terms of matching up the rear and front lot walls of this property uh, to the adjacent buildings, so we're not extending beyond the rear walls or the front walls of the property. So it's, it's very, has been situated on the property in a way that's very considerate to the adjacent neighbors. Once again, this is a proposal that is very reflective of the existing context. It is something that has been done through an analysis for, in terms of number of lots that are found on both the north sides and the south sides of Cameron Avenue. And it is a consistent building pattern that's being, that has been proposed on this property. If there's any questions, I'd be glad to answer them.
Okay, thank you. Does the committee have any questions of the speaker? Mr. Classen?
Yes, Mr. Chair, just a question for the speaker. Uh, I've been looking at the letter from the counselor and that, that the letter states that, that the counselor is opposed and makes note that if this was east of Botham, that would be a stronger, a stronger case. So I just wonder how you would respond?
Yes, sir. In terms, the, what, what the difference between the east side and the west side, quite frankly, is very similar. There is really no difference in terms of the east side of Botham or the west side where the subject site is located. The east side has similar characteristics in terms of lot frontages and lot areas where you have lot frontages less than seven point six two meters or less. And it's also, also the same character that's found in the west side where the subject site is located on Cameron Street, on both the north and south sides. So what the official plan speaks to is, is that it talks about the prevailing character of the immediate and broader context. And if you talk about the immediate context, you have a prevailing pattern of development where it's a very, it's a mixture of lot frontages and lot fronted, lot, lot areas. And the lot frontages that are found within the immediate block is characteristic of what we're being, what's being proposed before you today. So in terms of the official plan and meeting the section fifty-one requirements of the Planning Act, it passes all the tests in terms of maintaining the prevailing character, maintaining prevailing lotting pattern and also the lot areas and lot frontages. So those are my submissions, but I would say to you that if you look immediately to the east of Botham, which is the street that runs north-south immediately, east of the subject site and compare it to the immediate block where the subject site is located, it's very similar in character in terms of nature.
Okay, thank you, sir. Does the committee have any further questions of the speaker? There being none, uh, we have no other further speakers, so if we could take this into committee, if I could get a motion on this application, please? Please note that with respect to, uh, application A zero three zero zero slash twenty-two NY, that's part one and two, the applicant has made a revision to variance number six, which is reducing the proposed site exterior main wall height from eight point one two meters to seven point nine nine meters as recommended by city planning. Just to, uh, committee to be aware that there is three separate planning reports with respect to this application. There's the report from city planning dated the fourth of August, which is recommending approval of the severance subject to standard conditions. There's a planning report of the same date relating to part three, which has no objections to the application subject to a condition. And there's also the report relating, relating to parts one and two, which recommended the change to the main wall height plus another condition to build according to the approved plan. So if I could get a motion on this revised application from committee? Ms. Sankar?
Through you, Mr. Chair. You know, I, I had some concerns as well, as Mr. Classen about the counselor's comments, but I tend to also observe what the staff recommendations state. And so for that reason, um, you know, and for the responses provided by the applicant here today, I'll put forward a motion to approve this and I'll just go through it slowly, one by one. So with respect to, um, the severance, I'll put forward a motion to approve that and make it, again, subject to the staff recommendations of August fourth. As well as, again, I will hold staff's advisory comments, so I will be making that motion subject to forestry. With respects to part one, two, and three, let's take parts one and two first. I'll make a motion to approve that one as well, for parts one and two. And again, make it subject to the August fourth, uh, report that the proposal be developed substantially in accordance with the site plan drawing submitted to the committee. That was dated July nineteenth. And as well, that will be subject to the variance, the changes made by the applicant here today to reduce variance number six to seven point nine nine meters. And then for part three of this application, I'll make a motion to approve that as well and make it subject to, I, I, sorry, make it subject to the August fourth, uh, staff report that the proposal be developed in accordance with the site plan drawing submitted to the committee as received on July nineteenth. And the entire application, again, will be subject to forestry. I'm hoping I'm not missing anything, but that's my motion, Mr. Chair.
Ms. Sankar, we, you just need to add in, there's a, uh, report from development engineering dated the seventh of June.
Yes.
Had no objection subject to standard conditions.
Right, I, I forgot about that. So yes, let's make it subject to the engineering report as well. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Sankar. Summon the second Ms. Sankar's motion? Mr. Kidd seconds, all those in favor? Opposed? Mr. Classen dissenting. Uh, sir, your application is approved subject to urban forestry, city planning, and development engineering conditions.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. I'll go to the next application, five oh five Valial Street. I believe Mr. Ruck is the agent on this one as well. Mr. Ruck, are you there?
Good morning, Mr. Chairman, it's Ian Andres here. I am the representative of the owner and applicant.
Okay, thank you. Can I get your full name and address, please?
Yes, Ian Andres, I'm a lawyer with Owens LLP, three thirty-three Bay Street, Suite thirty-four hundred.
Okay, thank you, sir. I just wanted to, before we start, I'm just going, noticed that there's a number of staff reports here in connection with your application. There's a, a report from urban forestry, which recommends refusal of the application. There is a heritage planning report dated the eleventh of August, which has no objection, uh, subject to conditions. There's a development engineering report of the fifteenth of June that has no objections to your application subject to conditions. And a transportation services report, which has no objections subject to a standard condition, which is already part of the development engineering standard conditions. Uh, so sir, have you had the opportunity to review those reports, sir?
I have indeed and I'm prepared to speak to them in my presentation.
Thank you, sir. If you could give us a, give the committee a, I understand there's a history with this application, so if you'd like to give us a presentation on what you see as the merits of your proposal?
Yes, absolutely, thank you. So there is some slides up on the screen there and I'll just ask the staff to move forward through the slides as I go. So the subject property is a fifty-foot wide rectangular mid-block lot in Davisville. It's also a deep lot with numerous mature trees in the back half of the rear yard, most of which are proposed to be retained and protected. The existing physical context of the area includes a variety of two-to-three-story single and semi-detached dwellings. Many of the houses have existing integral garages or parking pads in the front or side yards, which is a very common condition in the area. There is indeed a long history to this application. Our client bought this property in twenty eighteen with no knowledge that the city intended to undertake a cultural heritage evaluation. He filed applications at the time seeking to demolish the existing building, but those did not proceed and the city instead moved forward with a report recommending designation under the Heritage Act. Next slide, please. The second slide shows a few photos of the existing building that's on the property. It's situated closer to the Westerly lot line than the Easterly and you can also see it's in small font there, but the heritage attributes identified by the city are shown on the slide and they're in the, the recommendation report. The attributes pertain only to the cottage-style building at the front and its side elevations, not to the rear south elevation in the rear wing, as you can see it on the note at the bottom. The existing building was in poor shape when our client bought the property. It requires enormous investment to make it usable again. And after council, city council confirmed that it intended to designate the property, our client filed an objection to the conservation review board back in twenty nineteen. That matter is still outstanding and it's awaiting the outcome of this proceeding. But if this application is approved, our client is prepared to withdraw that objection and allow the designation to come into effect. So over the last three and a half years, we've been working closely with, uh, city staff in legal, planning, heritage preservation, and transportation to work through various possible outcomes. Next slide, please. There were numerous iterations studied, there was lots of back and forth with staff. In the end, the only option that made sense, practical sense, in order to enable the front, uh, existing building to be conserved is to shift it slightly to the east on a horizontal plane by just a few feet, so that it's centered on the lot. Other iterations that we explored would not provide practical opportunities to develop and to justify the significant expense of conserving the building, which in and of itself is too small to provide for sufficient living space. This property badly needs attention and the proposed development is the culmination of extensive evaluation and compromise. Next slide, please. We're very pleased to have reached a proposal that has the full support of the city's heritage preservation services staff and city planning staff. That's indicated in the report dated August eleventh. And heritage staff have confirmed the proposal will appropriately conserve the heritage resource in accordance with all applicable provincial and municipal policies. We're also very pleased to have secured the strong support of CEDRA, the Local Residents Association, and the North York Community Preservation Panel, as indicated in Ms. Moore's letter. The proposal's also been vetted through numerous iterations with planning, transportation, and ECS to ensure all their comments have been addressed. I am aware of the urban forestry memo, what came is quite as last-minute surprise, given all the consultation has occurred. But with respect, the concerns expressed in that memo are unfounded. There's only one regulated tree proposed for removal and it's a spruce tree in the middle of the rear yard, which has a diameter of thirty-two centimeters that barely qualifies for protection. And our client is proposing to replant at a three-to-one ratio for that tree removal. We're aware that an application will be required from urban forestry. It's not possible to plant in the front yard because the city's requiring that the existing heritage building be conserved and it's already very close to the street. So unfortunately, we can't have it both ways. We cannot both preserve that building and plant in the front yard. And when heritage matters like this are involved, a balancing of interests is required. So with all due respect to urban forestry, I would urge the committee to, uh, to not follow their recommendation. Next slide, please. The proposed lot severance, uh, allows the property to be split into a pair of semis. It's entirely appropriate, it will add new housing stock in the midst of a housing crisis. The proposed lots are rectangular, they're entirely compliant with the zoning bylaw in terms of minimum frontage and width. All of the variances meet the four tests, both individually and collectively, as articulated in the cover letter. While there may appear to be a lot of variances on its face, many are driven by the requirement to retain the existing heritage building. Nine of the variances related to front yard setback, front yard landscaping, and parking all effectively recognize existing conditions related to the heritage building and its proximity to the street. We had originally proposed integral garages, consistent with other houses on the street, but the new Davisville bylaw does not allow garage doors on the front wall, so we had to abandon that proposal. And the new residents will need somewhere to park, so the only reasonable option is along the side of the heritage building, as you can see there. Transportation services is okay with this. The height variances are extremely minor and it entirely respect the physical character of the street. The proposal complies with the overall height in five sixty-nine and it's only sixteen centimeters above the height limit in four thirty-eight eighty-six because it's measured differently and that bylaw will soon be superseded anyway. The sidewall height variance at seven point nine meters is also entirely reasonable.
Sir, can you summarize, please?
Yeah, the increased depth is, I want to address, uh, it's, it's showing nineteen point nine meters, but it's actually only thirteen meters associated with the new building, so the massing is far less than it appears. The rear wall is aligned with the house to the west, which is an important consideration.
Thank you.
Can I, Mr. Chairman, there, I have to address some of the conditions, perhaps someone could ask me about those?
No, you can't, sir, your five minutes is up. Okay, so we'll move on to the next person on the list. Pardon me, is there any questions of the speaker? There being none, I'll go to the next person on the list. I have Sharon Maurer, Maurer, M O U R E R.
Uh, yes, can you hear me?
Yes, I can hear you. Can I get your full name and address, please?
Okay, my name is Sharon Maurer, that's M O U R E R. And my address is four two seven Bell Size Drive. I'm a few blocks away.
Okay, thank you. If you'd like to give us your thoughts on this application?
Uh, yes. I'm the chair of heritage for the Local Residents Association, CEDRA, and I'm also a member of the North York Preservation Panel. My focus here today is on the heritage aspect of this proposal. And as I stated in my letter, I've been monitoring this property for almost five years. Uh, I was at the first committee of adjustment in October of twenty seventeen. Uh, CEDRA supported the heritage designation a few months after that. And when the designation was appealed to the conservation review board, I signed up as a participant. Because of my involvement in this process, uh, I'm aware that there's been settlement discussions between the owners and the city for almost two years. Uh, so this is not your usual committee of adjustment application. These plans were jointly arrived at over the past couple of years by the owners and the city. And I'm comfortable supporting this proposal because heritage staff have had input into the proposal. Uh, the members of the North York Preservation Panel appreciate that this is not another example of heritage facadeism. This is the conservation of a three-dimensional house. Uh, the idea of incorporating a heritage house as the entryway of two new houses is rather clever. And I'd personally like to thank whoever came up with that. Uh, the North York Preservation Panel, it also encourages you to include the two conditions that were requested in the heritage staff report. Uh, these conditions relate to the drawings, final drawings being approved by the manager of heritage planning and conditions around moving, et cetera. Uh, finally, I, you know, please approve this proposal. It's time to take this piece of the past and move it forward. Thank you.
Thank you, madam. Does the committee have any questions of the speaker? There being none, we'll move on to the next person on the list. I have a William Wolf, W O L F E, are you there, sir?
Mr. Chair, I've been advised that William will not be speaking at this hearing today.
Okay, thank you. Take him off the list. I have, next person on the list is Margaret Evans. Or Margaret McKnight, are you there?
Mr. Chair, I've been advised that neither of the Margretts will be speaking at, at this hearing as well.
They won't, they aren't speaking, okay, thank you. Take them off the list. Next person on the list is Danielle Joel, J O E L.
Danielle, you've been?
Hello?
Yes, hello, can I get your full name and address, please?
Yes, it's Danielle Joel, I live at five oh three Beloil, that's the house immediately to the west of this proposal.
Okay, if you'd like to give us your thoughts on this application?
Yes, thank you. We just got back from vacation and I haven't had a chance to review everything in as much detail as I would have liked. It, it is true that this has been a long saga, the house has been vacant for five years and something needs to be done. And, and, and we do appreciate and see that a lot of work has, has gone into this new proposal. And, and I am happy to hear that there has been lots of work done with, with the city, but unfortunately, there's been no work done to discuss the proposal with the neighbors. Uh, I have a bunch of questions and, um, concerns that I would have rather addressed in, in a, in a more informal setting. The house is in very bad shape, it's been used by kids, uh, there's been drugs and, and shenanigans in there. It's been vandalized inside. It's been vandalized inside. My husband is an engineer, and we don't really understand how the house can be moved, and if it is moved, what happens if it actually, the structural integrity of the house falls down? I mean, nothing has been done in five years. It is a derelict, rotting, like the roof is falling down. So we're not clear on what happens to the proposal if the house is, cannot be moved. We have a tree, a large mature tree in the front yard. We are concerned about the lot line or the proposal goes right up to, you know, where our garden starts. We are a bit concerned that the roots of that tree are going to be impacted, and I'm not sure if the forestry memo deals with that or not. There is no doubt the backyard is in need of work. We would want the concerns of forestry to be addressed and to be dealt with. That's not to say everything would have to be abandoned, but we want to understand what trees are being protected and to ensure that the forestry, city forestry people's concerns are addressed. And ideally, I would, we would like a bigger setback on the west side of it, between our house and theirs. This is a very, very large development, and we feel that the proposal coming right up, you know, against our property is not reasonable, and we would like a more reasonable space between the two houses. Ultimately, and I'll just finish, I think a practical result here would be a short deferral so that the developer could work with the neighbors on, you know, on both sides, answer our questions, help us through the process a little bit, and come back with our support. We want to see this property developed and, you know, but it should be done in consultation and in a way that's respectful of the neighbors' rights to have setbacks in that respect. Thank you.
Thank you, madam. Does the committee have any questions of the speaker? There being none, I'll go back to Mr. Andres. Are you there, sir?
I am. Can you hear me?
Yes, I can hear. So you heard the comments from Ms. Joel? If you'd like to reply to them, please?
Yes, thank you very much. So first of all, our client is happy to continue discussing matters with Ms. Joel as this advances, and we're not supportive of a deferral today, but certainly happy to keep speaking with her. There's three items she raised that I'd like to address. I'll go in reverse order. On the side yard setback question between her house and the subject proposal, the proposal is actually compliant with the bylaw side yard setback for almost the entire building. The only side yard setback requirement or variance required has to do with the platform leading up to the front door of the new semi-detached dwelling. So it's really a small pinch point there, which does not extend for the full length of the house at all. It's just one small area, and it's only just a few steps above grade, so it won't present any massing along the sidewalk line that's not contemplated by the zoning bylaw. With respect to tree preservation, you can see in the top right-hand corner of the site plan that's shown on the screen, I believe that's the tree that Ms. Joel was referring to, and we have filed an arborist report which addresses that tree. You can see the diameter or the circumference of that tree protection zone shown on the site plan goes into the proposed new driveway a little bit. However, there is a retaining wall for that tree right along the property line. Our arborist has looked at it, and his opinion is that because of the retaining wall, there's no roots expected to be found in the shallow part of the subject property where the new driveway would be installed, so we're not anticipating any issues at all. However, we do recognize that an urban forestry application will be required, and so we're happy to work with urban forestry and to keep Ms. Joel informed as that progresses. But the long and short of it is, we don't see any issues to that tree being fully preserved and remaining healthy. Finally, on the heritage building relocation, we have spent a ton of time on this, as you've heard. It's only proposed to be shifted a few feet. The building is in poor shape in many respects, but we've done a lot of study of it, and we think that the building can be moved with proper engineering and support. We have to get a heritage permit from the city because the property is going to be designated so that any requirements associated with moving the building will be addressed with the city's Heritage Preservation Services Department in order to get that permit, and we will certainly, you know, have to satisfy them that the building is capable of being moved, and that's an integral part of this proposal. So that's kind of the first thing that has to be addressed. The one thing I need to point out there is with respect to the conditions requested by Heritage Preservation Services, they were, there's twofold. One is the variance condition requiring a heritage permit to be obtained and revised drawings to heritage satisfaction. That's totally fine. That's expected. We have no issue with that request or requirement. The condition for this consent to sever, though, is a bit problematic. So it says, within one year of provisional consent being granted, the owner will obtain a heritage permit and will relocate the building to its final location. As you know, provisional consent happens once the CFA approves and there's no more appeals, if any, and at law, we have one year to get our consent certificate after provisional consent. We're more than happy to obtain the heritage permit within that one year and clear that condition. It's the second part of the condition that's problematic where it says relocate the building within the one year. The reason this is problematic is because we're entering an election cycle, as you know. We need a heritage permit from council, so we're already set back a few months before that can happen. And the heritage building has to be placed on a new foundation, which is to be integrated into the new development. And so in order for that to happen, we're going to have to get below-grade building permits from the city so that when the building is shifted, it can be rested on its proper foundations. So what I'm requesting is that the second part of that condition be either deleted or migrated into a minor variance condition in terms of relocating the building. It's likely not going to be possible to relocate that building within the one year prior to the consent certificate being granted, but the city and the committee can take comfort knowing that once the consent certificate is granted, it lapses within two years, and we cannot actually affect the consent without having moved the building because the way the lot is proposed to be severed is right down the middle of that building, and the reciprocal easements that are being created to allow for a shared entryway also requires the building to be in the center of the lot. So practically speaking, it's not possible to affect the consent until the building has been moved. It's really a timing issue I'm raising, and I'm asking that instead of the building having to be moved within the one year to clear conditions for consent, that we have the full three-year period being the provisional consent timeline and then the two-years-lapsing timeline in order to move that building. So again, happy for the heritage permit to be a condition of approval, but the actual moving of the building, I would ask, be imposed as a minor variance condition and not a consent condition. Thank you.
Mr. Chair? I'm sorry, Mr. Lamb?
Just to let you know, the Planning Act has been amended to allow for a two-year to fulfill your consent conditions now. You have two years to fulfill your consent conditions now, not one year.
Thank you. Anything further to add, sir?
My comment would be the same. It's still a little tight. That does give some more breathing room, but because this has to happen in conjunction with the development and because, as I mentioned, you can't actually achieve the consent until the building has been relocated, it takes care of itself from a condition perspective.
Okay, thank you.
But I'm happy for it to be imposed as a condition of the variance. Thank you.
Thank you. Does the committee have any questions of the speaker? Mr. Khan?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Mr. Andres, my question is very simple. You said the building is in a poor condition. How poor it is? Is it dilapidated? Or how can it be transported to the new site when it is in such a condition? It cannot be shifted, and you're asking for the time. Please describe how poor is poor?
The building is in quite poor condition, but we've had engineers look at it, and we believe it's feasible to shift it, and we've been through this with heritage preservation staff. So until you actually pick it up and move it, I can't answer that question for certain, but I can tell you for certain that as part of the heritage permit we would need to get, there will be terms and conditions that address, you know, what happens if the building falls down when we try to move it. I presume there'll be insurance requirements and all that sort of thing. So there's really no other option other than to just let it continue to deteriorate. If my client's going to invest money in this, we need a strategy to do it properly, and this is the strategy that makes the most sense that heritage staff have vetted and approved. So there's lots of heritage building specialists out there. We will, you know, it's our objective to move this and have it retained and, you know, restore it to all its glory in the slightly new location. I can't tell you with 100% certainty today that we won't encounter a structural problem, but, you know, based on our reviews we've done today, we think it's achievable.
Okay, thank you, sir.
When you are asking, when you are asking for the time, would you repair this building during this time?
Yes, as I just said, we would have to move the building and restore it in its new condition, on a new foundation, before the consent gets executed or gets, before the law gets split in two, the building has to be in its new location, on its new foundation.
Thank you.
Does the committee have any further questions of the speaker? Mr. Kidd?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I'm just, if the agent can just clarify, with the respect to the condition, to the consent, you're asking for a three-year provisional consent to be granted?
No, no, sorry. Let me try to be more clear. I'm not asking for anything more than the Planning Act provides, and I do see that it's been amended to allow for a two-year provisional consent period, whereas it used to be just one year. What I was saying is that once you get, once your provisional consent, once the conditions are cleared and the provisional consent becomes a full consent with a certificate, there's then a further period, a lapsing period that you're on the clock for. So, you know, that would now become a four-year period overall with the two years to get your consent certificate and two more years before your consent lapses. So that effectively becomes the period, but that allows sufficient flexibility to make sure that we properly explore the structural components of this and that we go to council and get a heritage permit that staff are comfortable with to ensure that everything is protected. I'm just requesting this relief so that we're not hamstrung on too tight a timeline for no good reason. You know, we have an outside date regardless. It's just the flexibility and the additional time, you know, in case things arise, we just want the ability to deal with that.
Okay, sir, if I could add, just to follow on Mr. Kidd's question, what are you proposing? You're proposing to amend condition number two of the heritage planning report? And what would you amend it to read?
I would request that it be amended to strike the last portion, which says, "and will relocate the building to its final location." So that's not part of a...
So what you're saying is, you're suggesting that variance number two read, "within one year of provisional consent being granted, the owner will obtain a heritage permit,"
Yeah, and in fact, the reason I was focused on the one year is because it's written right into the condition. So even if the Planning Act has been amended, this condition would effectively not give us the two-year period. It would limit us to a one-year period. So that one-year period is okay for the heritage permit to be obtained, but not for the building to be relocated. It's just too tight of a timeline.
So would it be more appropriate for it to simply read as a condition number two, "the owner will obtain a heritage permit that relocates the building to its final location"?
That permits the relocation of the building to its final location?
Yeah, but it doesn't...
It's the heritage permit from the city that get...
So if...
And yes, I agree that removing the timeline makes sense because it'll be a condition to be satisfied before provisional consent is turned into a certificate.
So if it read, like I said, "the owner will obtain a heritage permit to relocate the building to its final location," if that's all it said, that covers everything?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
If I could get a motion on this application, please. Please note it would be up to committee whether it wants to amend condition number two of the heritage planning memorandum of 11th of August.
Mr. Chair?
Yes, Mr. Classen?
I wonder if I could ask, thank you, I wonder if I could just ask a quick question of staff. There isn't a planning report, so would the standard, would, if the committee was to grant the application, would the standard, would the standard terms apply that are part of the severance?
Sorry, we're just going to check to see if there is a staff report.
Thank you.
There is no planning report with this application.
It's confirmed there is no staff report. But if you want, you can impose the condition of standard consent conditions used in the
Any further questions? If I could get a motion on this application, please? Mr. Kidd?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Given the support offered from the heritage planning and from the citizens group, I think this application represents a good compromise between maintaining heritage and developing this property. My only concern is with the forestry report that asks us to deny it. Given my concerns with the forestry report, I'm going to put forward a motion to accept this consent and minor variance applications, subject to the forestry conditions, the consent to be subject to the TPPR condition number three, and the minor variance applications to be subject to the TPPR condition number one. Also, there'd be conditions from the Engineering and Construction Services Division and Transportation Services from, contained in their report dated June 15, 1820, 2022. And also, the conditions set out in the heritage staff report dated August 11, 2022, and the condition for the minor variance, that the, prior to the issuance of the building permit, building permit drawings, including plans, elevation, and details shall be submitted to the satisfaction of Senior Manager, Heritage Planning, Urban Design at City Planning. And with respect to the consent application, the condition to read, "the owner will obtain a heritage permit and relocate the building to its final location," and...
That's the issue, sir.
Subject...
You relocate.
Sorry, sorry to interrupt, but that, what's the issue that the applicant had? If you put in "and relocate," which means he's still obligated to relocate the building. I'm not going to, I don't want to tell you how to word your condition, but I believe that was the concern that the applicant had, was to relocate. If you want to bring, if you want to pause your motion and let the applicant speak again, you can do that, but just to clarify, I believe that that was the concern of the applicant. If you include the word "and relocate," which means he has to relocate the building within, if you remove the first section of one year and add it in simply as a consent condition, he has two years to do it. If you leave the wording "and relocate," he will have to relocate the building within two years.
No, that's, hang on. Mr. Kidd, Mr. Lamb, we'll just hold this for a second, hold that thought, Mr. Kidd. We'll go back to Mr. Andres. Mr. Andres, are you there?
I am, thank you.
Mr. Andres, we have motion from Mr. Kidd for condition number two of the heritage planning report, is that it reads, "the owner will obtain a heritage permit and relocate the building to its final location." Is that acceptable to you?
No, sir. I much prefer the wording that you had put to me a few minutes ago... Um, no, sir, I much prefer the wording that you had put to me a few minutes ago, which just changes one word, it changes "and" to "to." So it would say, "The applicant shall obtain a heritage permit to relocate the building to its final location."
So, so the suggestion is, is to remove the word "and" and make it a "to," so it reads, "The owner will obtain a heritage permit to relocate the building to its final location."
Yes, that is acceptable, thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Kidd, you heard that?
Yes, I, I, I'll try that again. Um, the, uh, condition with, uh, from, um, uh, Heritage Planning staff, um, with respect to the consent to sever is to read, "The owner will obtain a heritage permit to relocate the building to its final location."
Thank you, Mr. Kidd. So we have a motion...
There's, there's, I'm, I'm sorry, there's one other condition, I believe, from, uh, Transportation Services, uh, set out in the report dated, uh, October 4, 2022, that, uh, a notation on the site plan drawing stating that all portions of the existing, uh, site access driveways within the site frontage that are no longer required must be closed and restored with soft landscaping and full concert curbs to the satisfaction of Transportation Services.
Okay.
That's, that's my motion.
Thanks, Mr. Kidd.
Mr. Chair? Mr. Chair?
Um, Mr. Chair.
I would still suggest adding on...
Hang on.
The standard consent conditions?
And this was just, that's what I was just going to say. Mr. Kidd, the condition that Transportation Services wanted put in is already in their development engineering condition, so it's redundant.
Okay.
No, sir, what I, what I meant was the standard, in lieu, since there is no staff report, I would still recommend the standard consent conditions.
Okay, so standard, standard consent conditions from City Planning. Subject to st... Okay, Mr. Kidd, I'm sorry, so what we're asking for, what Mr. Lamb is asking for is that we also include the standard consent conditions from City Planning.
Yes, so, um, yes, if I could also include the standard consent, uh, conditions from, uh, City Planning.
Thank you very much, Mr. Kidd. So we have a motion from Mr. Kidd to approve the application subject to urban forestry, subject to development engineering conditions, subject to transportation services conditions, subject to City Planning standard consent conditions, and subject to Heritage Planning conditions number one, and a revised condition number two that reads, "The owner will obtain a heritage permit to relocate the building to its final location." So if we could get a motion on Mr. Kidd's, if I could get a, someone to second Mr. Kidd's motion, Mr. Classen seconds, all those in favor? Opposed? Miss Sankar dissenting? That motion carries. Sir, your application has been approved, suburban forestry, heritage planning is revised, development engineering, transportation services, and city planning condition, consent conditions.
Thank you very much for your thoughtful consideration, have a good day.
Thank you. Ladies and gentlemen, we'll take a five-minute break.
Ladies and gentlemen, committee is back in session. We're on item number five, just to let everyone know, item four, 213 Homewood Avenue was deferred. So we're on item number five, which is 1204 Rose Lawn Avenue. I have three people registered to speak. The agent is Jonathan Benskowsky. Are you there, sir?
I am, sir.
Yes, Mr. Benskowsky, could I get your full name and address, please?
Yes, Jonathan Benskowsky, 301 Kiwattan Avenue.
Okay, thank you, sir. Just note, going through your file, I note there is one memo on file from staff. It's from a recommended condition from Urban Forestry. Since we have other people registered to speak, sir, if you could give the committee a brief presentation on what you see as the merits of your proposal.
Yeah, absolutely. If you could bring up the presentation I submitted, please. The first issue to deal with is the Urban Forestry, and I have communicated with them since the report was submitted. The first page of my support material shows the actual condition on the site of that front tree being already removed when my client purchased the property. I since have an email from forestry saying they will remove that condition at a later date, but I am okay with you implementing that condition today if you do deem this to be a meritorious application. Turning to the variances itself, the variance itself is to add a two-story addition above the existing one-story as well as a three-story side addition. The existing setback on the east is as it is today. It is merely putting a three-story, sorry, a two-story addition above it as well as a three-story side addition. The additional variances are to permit what is permitted in an RM zone, which is a triplex. Important to note that the RM zone permits triplexes. This is somewhat of a unique site in its location where the site itself fronts onto Rose Lawn with the garage at the rear actually accessed off of Castle Field. So I'm not sure if you're very familiar, but just west of Duffer on the south side, there are a row of houses as we turn towards kind of the Lowes and the commercial shopping that have frontages onto Rose Lawn with rear garages that go onto Castle Field. So the proposal is to maintain that east setback and then introduce a 1.2-meter sideyard setback. That setback is a result of this being proposed as a triplex legally with the proposal. If we could continue to some of the pictures. In terms of the variances that relate to the main wall height, that main wall height, I have included some pictures of what is on Rose Lawn as well as what is on the street immediately to the east where we see these main wall heights, again, along Miranda, which Rose Lawn actually dead-ends into this portion. So we do have a main wall height that is consistent with what we are proposing in the neighborhood. As for the epicide, it's a very nominal increase of .05% to the zoning bylaw. If we were to go back to the site plan or the survey, we'll see that the proposed sideyard setbacks are consistent with what is in the neighborhood here. Again, this is a tightly packed urban neighborhood along Rose Lawn, and the introduction of a 1.2-meter setback, in my opinion, is appropriate on the west side of the property. I'd be happy to answer any questions. Oh, lastly, in terms of the appropriateness of a three-unit dwelling here, this is located about a nine-to-10-minute walk from the corner of Duffer and Eglington, which will have the crosstown added. So again, the appropriateness of an RM zone property adding additional units, again, with having no city planning objection, in my opinion, is appropriate.
Okay, thank you, sir. Does the committee have any questions of the speaker? Mr. Khan?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. My question is, sir, you are saying that you want to add third story, and you are not applying for the height of the building as a variance. Would it exceed the height permissible under the zoning bylaw?
Through you, Mr. Chair, no. The height permission for this property isn't regulated by a story itself. Sorry, the actual height permission is an 11 meters of maximum height or three stories. So both the three stories as well as the overall height we're proposing before you is as per the zoning bylaw. So again, the zoning bylaw does permit three-story dwellings and permits a maximum height of 11 meters. The proposal before you today, including an architectural feature, is 10.56 meters. So the overall height is below the maximum roof height and is in keeping with the maximum number of stories, which is three for this property. Again, that's largely contemplated by being zone RM, which permits and encourages multi-level, multi-unit buildings.
Thank you, sir. I had a question with respect to variance number one, the exterior main wall height. I know you made the examples of the, showed a couple of examples there, but the actual, the three-story townhouse buildings are actually on Miranda. They don't front on this particular street. And the other, I think the gray-colored building, that's a commercial building, is it not?
No, that is a residential.
Okay, so the overwhelming majority of the buildings on this particular block are single-family or older two-story. They're not, and they're certainly not 10.33 meters high with their main wall heights. Is that correct?
That is correct. What I would say to that again is this RM zoning permits that three-story, be it with a main wall height or a pitched roof. Now, there has been a past LPAT decision where in the old Toronto and portions of the east district, they will be adding one meter to that main wall height. That being said, we would still require a variance for a main wall height, but to go back to the appropriateness in an RM zone of a three-story dwelling, it is permitted and it is contemplated here. What I would say is if it is built within the roof line or through a main wall height, again, a three-story is permitted and encouraged in that RM zone on this property.
Okay, thank you. Does the committee have any further questions of the speaker? We'll go to the next person on the list. I have Joel Saw, S.A. Are you there?
Joel, you've been unmuted.
Joel's, yes, hello, sir?
Hello, can you hear me?
Yes, I can hear you. Can I get your full name and address, please?
Yeah, so Joel Saw, home address is 1206 Rose Lawn Avenue.
Okay, if you'd like to give us your thoughts on this application?
Yeah, again, referring to the height, I don't think the height variance is minor by nature. I think it's major because it's asking for 1.8 meters more than allowed. Also, I don't think the neighborhood matches the characteristics of the, similar to what's being proposed. Also, you can clearly tell by the plant that it's being designed for, though it's two units on top, it's designed to be a fourplex. Also, the trees, there's been a removal of two trees, one in the front and the pine tree in the front that was there when the property was purchased. Also, a new planted tree on Castle Field was removed recently as well. And also want to refer that, I don't know if it matters, but the person never approached any of the neighbors in regards of this project. That is all.
Okay, thank you, sir. Does the committee have any questions of the speaker? There being none, I go to the next speakers on the list. I have Christina or Severino Pereira. Are you there?
Hi there, yes, I'm here.
Yes, hello, can I get your full name and address, please?
Okay, so I'm Christina Pereira. My home that I live at is 1193 Rose Lawn Avenue. My father's name is also on my home here, but he is the owner of 1202 Rose Lawn Avenue. He has asked that I speak on his behalf as well because he doesn't know how to do any of this, and he's the property directly adjacent to the proposed building just east of the 1204 Rose Lawn Avenue. So he's at 1202. And so we, I've never done this before, my apologies. So my dad asked that I voice his concerns, which are mine as well, and the first one would be, yes, there have, were trees, two trees, that were removed on this property. The pine tree in the front, I actually have pictures, that were cut down, I think, late December of 2021. The home was purchased in, oh, the people moved out in September, so I don't know, it was purchased before that. So pine tree was there and it was cut down. With approval or not, I'm not sure, we're not sure of. Now, at the back of the property, there's the tree, the pine tree, that's right in that picture. At the back of the property, very, very recently, within the last two months or so, city workers have planted trees at the back of the properties. Now, the tree that was at the back of this garage has now been removed just within the last couple of weeks. We noticed it was gone. We're like, what the heck is going on? Also, if you look at the residences in the area, they are all single-family, possibly a renter in a basement or something, dwelling homes, and most of them are bungalows. There are some that are two-story homes, and as one of the speakers had stated, that most of the newer ones are on Miranda Avenue, which are west of this proposed building, not east, and they are two-story above, I guess the garage goes down below, right? So two-story above. The gray building, as explained, is not residential, it's commercial, that gray building on Rose Lawn Avenue. So this proposed structure, building, triplex, whatever, quadplex, is going to be like overshadowing the two adjacent properties. It's, you know, proposed to be much higher, taller than what we have anything in the area, even the other commercial buildings, they're all low-rise buildings. So I think that's pretty much it. That's pretty much my concerns.
Okay, thank you, madam. Does the committee have any questions of the speaker? There being none, we'll go back to the agent.
Mr. Chair, there is one other speaker registered. His name is Jose Araujo.
Okay, I don't have him on the list here, but we'll try. Oh, I'm sorry, Jose Araujo, A-R-A-U-J-O.
Yes.
Are you there, sir?
Yes, I am.
Can I get your full name and address, please?
My name is Jose Araujo. I'm at 1191 Rose Lawn.
Okay, if you'd like to give us your thoughts on this application?
Yes, so there's a few things. Things are a little frustrating. We didn't get, no, this is the only letter we've gotten with this. We've got no blueprints, no nothing, so I'm going to have to apologize in advance that I'm not quite prepared for this. So now, I've been on this street for 10 years, all right? Like everyone has said, this Rose Lawn area is just mainly bungalows. Two or three years ago, our neighbor to the west of us, I think four houses up, he took down his bungalow, I mean, a two-story. It is a beautiful building. It's next to the gray and black building, which is commercial. Miranda is all townhouses, it had nothing to do with Rose Lawn. So I like how deceiving Jonathan was with showing pictures of houses that are not even related to Rose Lawn. Rose Lawn is a very nice community, very nice street, all bungalows, right? The other thing people don't realize, this street is a very high crime rate. Every night cars are being broken into. That's already frustrating. On Rose Lawn, just on Duffer, there's an Audi dealership, and when they try to test-drive new cars, our street is a race strip. We call the police all the time saying that cars are just racing up and down the street, and they're all Audis. A little bit west of that is a couple mechanics as well. When they go to test-drive their cars, they just test-drive them on Rose Lawn, and my children can't even play on the street because of the noise and race cars. It's ridiculous. So it is getting a little frustrating, and now with this proposal of this house, this is just ridiculous. Clearly, these are four rental units that they're building, okay? So I mean, if the house is 25 feet wide, you're going up two stories, then you're going to go 30 feet wide. It's going to shadow both houses on either side. It's ridiculous, right? It's just all bungalows, right? And the thing with the trees, yes, there was a tree in the front, they just took it upon themselves to cut it, you know? And I'm getting the feeling where, you know, they're just taking things upon themselves to try to push this proposal. The tree in the back, yes, a few months ago, the city of Toronto did plant trees in the back on Castle Field, that tree has also been removed in the back of that property, right? Like that, I mean, they're just taking things into their own hands. Like, nothing is right about this project at all, right? So I mean, you can get the tone of my voice, I'm a little frustrated with this project. It's just, it's not going to meet the way this street is. We're all friendly neighbors, and they want to jam another four families into a 20-foot house-wide house. Like, it's ridiculous, right? So I mean, it's just going to add to the chaos. I mean, honestly, if you look at police reports on the street and stuff like that, this is a pretty chaotic street. To the east of us, there is a factory that is only one-story. It's only one-story. Why didn't Jonathan show that picture, right? It's just to the east of us, like four houses down. It's a massive, massive factory, very polite people, awesome workers, and it's only a one-story. The gray and black building, like everyone said, that is purely commercial, that's not residential, okay? And the fact that he showed the photos of Miranda, that's a totally different street. Like, and that other side photo of the brick house, that's also a Miranda address, but he showed the side view of the Rose Lawn side of the street. So it looks a little deceiving that Jonathan took those certain photos, but not the entire street. This project really, it's going to be an eyesore. It's, I mean, it's going to be the biggest eyesore on this street. I've been here 10 years. My neighbor across the street has been here 25 years. I have another neighbor that's been here for 30 years. Like, seriously, we, you just can't move into the neighborhood thinking that you could do whatever you want. This is not right, a four-story, four apartments. Now, if they want to do a two-story, I'm not opposed to that. You know, I'm not opposed to that. My neighbor did it up the street, and the house looks fantastic, right? But a three-story plus basement, plus a roof? No way, it's an eyesore. You know, like I said, it's a high crime rate, people are breaking into the cars all the time, and people are in my backyard all the time because there's a, there's a city pathway behind us. And I mean, it's just, it's ridiculous, and we don't need the extra frustration with, you know, all this other stuff, right? I don't like the fact they cut the trees down. I'm assuming they did it without permission because I didn't see no tags on the tree. I did not, it was just, it looked like just basic landscapers cutting it down. So, I mean, it looks fishy already, and I don't like the fact that I did not get blueprints before this letter. Like, I got, I got nothing. I'm sitting on just this one variance letter, like, there was no proposal to build, I got no blueprints. Like, I feel bad that I'm not prepared now, and I'm kind of, I'm a little confused on what to say next.
Sir, can you summarize, please?
This building will be an eyesore. It does not belong on this street. Do you want to build a two-story? Do you want to build a two-story? I got no problem with that. One floor above existing, no problem, but not this massive warehouse you want to build.
Okay, thank you.
You know, it's not right. All right, thank you so much.
Thank you. Does the committee have any questions of the speaker? We'll go back to Mr. Benskowsky. Are you there, sir?
I am, sir.
Yeah, you've heard the comments from the previous speakers, if you'd like to reply?
Yeah, I just kind of want to bring it back to the proposal that is, that is before you. Again, going back to what the zoning bylaw permits, the zoning bylaw permits an 11-meter maximum height with three stories. So that's a zoning bylaw permission that is, that is, that is there, and again, that is what's contemplated as an acceptable impact. The height we're proposing for the actual roof is half a meter below, okay? So in terms of the massing of the side main walls, yes, that is a variance we are requesting, but again, an 11-meter total height with a maximum of three stories is permitted as of right in the zoning bylaw. In terms of speaking to the sideyard setbacks, because this is a proposed duplex, and again, I'm here to speak to the plans that are before me and that are before you, they show two units with two kitchens. The proposal is for two legal units. In terms of the setback that is proposed at 1.2 meters, in my opinion, the setback provision, the general intent and purpose is to allow for appropriate separation as well as access into rear yards. Both sides propose a 1.2-meter sideyard setback with the east being what is existing and the west being what is proposed, which again, allows for sufficient access as well as spatial separation between the adjacent properties. Speaking to the trees, from what I understand, the tree in the rear was removed by the city of Toronto. Again, that has no bearing on the proposal that is before you today. That is a tree that was on Castle Field to the rear. In terms of the tree that was in the front yard, city of Toronto forestry itself, even though that tree is not there today, had only requested that a permit to injure or remove be applied for. So there is no objection from forestry from where we are today. So I just, again, want to bring us back to the proposal that is before you today and where that fits within the zoning bylaw. The zoning bylaw, again, permits an 11-meter three-story dwelling. If this were to be a single-family dwelling, that sideyard setback proposed is as per the zoning bylaw. When you make it a duplex, it increases from 1.2 meters to 1.8 meters. In terms of that side main wall height, again, the side main wall height provision, okay, is there for a consistent feel with what is in the neighborhood, be it in the immediate context or that broader context. And that 8.5 meters would be permitted then to go to an 11-meter top of a pitched man-starred roof. I'd be happy to answer any questions you might have.
Thank you, sir. Does the committee have any questions of the speaker? There being none, could I get a motion on this application, please? Mr. Khan?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Mr. Chair, I have heard the comments on both sides, for and against, about this application. There is no staff recommendation, and the purpose that I see that adding two-story on one side and three stories on the side addition, I find variance number one, 10.334 exceeds the 8.5 millimeter maximum allowable. Variance number two, FSI exceeds then allowable. And forest recommendations are that this application be deferred or be refused, and I find these are not minor variances, therefore this application be refused.
Okay, I have a motion for Mr. Khan to refuse the application. Ms. Sankar seconds, all those in favor? Opposed? Mr. Klassen dissenting. Sir, your application has been refused. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
We're on item number six, 67 Stibbert Avenue. I have, just go here, one person registered to speak, that's Tom Sprague, the agent. Are you there, sir?
Yes.
Yes, hello, sir.
Can you hear me okay?
Can I get your full name and address?
Yes, it's Tom Sprague, Sprague and Company Architects, and our address here in Toronto is 156 Duncan Mill Road.
Okay, thank you, sir. Just going through your file, I note that there are no staff comments or recommended conditions attached to your file. You have three variances before us, it's pretty clear what you're asking for in the application. I just wanted to ask, is there anything you'd like to tell the committee that isn't contained in the material we have before us this morning?
Yes, I would like to just briefly cap, to give a bit more explanation on the variances. If I could ask to have the supporting material that was posted on August the 5th, yes, it's this drawing right here. This will actually explain in detail two of the variances, really, the sideyard variance at the side, and we've highlighted that in red. This is on the east side, and we're proposing to go .6 meters just for the, for approximately 27 feet at the front of the house, it would be 20 feet on the second, and the rest will be either stepped back to four feet or three feet at the back. So that's the extent of it, it's not all the way along. In fact, the existing house, as it is right now, is located, it was .76 meters at the front, but it's .7 at the back, so at the back, we're going to be .9. So in essence, it's pretty comparable to what exists, if not a little bit further away from the property line at the back. We've also highlighted on this drawing the extent of the area at the back with respect to the length, and we've shaded that in red. Again, it's on the east side of the, of the, of the property, and it goes out five feet or 1.52 meters beyond the 17-meter length on the first floor. Having said that, on the second floor, we step it back to point three, to three feet or .9 meters. So that's the extent of that area and a small area at the side. As I should say, with the existing survey, as I mentioned, or the existing houses is closer to the property line right now, and there's a bay window that comes out, so. So these are the extent of those two variances, and I would like, lastly, just to, there was another, which we posted on August, that was posted on August, August the 4th, and if you could pull that up, it just had some information on floor space indexes. It was in form of a letter. Yes, there it is, right there. And what we did, we went through and looked at all past decisions that were made by past committee of adjustment panels, and we focused sort of on two, really, on Stibbert Avenue where we are, and then the street drew to the south, similar-sized lots, Shell Drake, just to get an idea of what the size of other homes in the area is. And on this particular list, there's actually 15 that have a higher floor space index than what we're asking for. So just in summary, I would say that, you know, what's, and there's a length, other length examples down below as well. So in summary, my feeling is that it's certainly very much in keeping with the size of other homes in the area, and in my opinion, it's, it is minor in nature, and also, we've tried to design it so you'll notice there's no heights, we're within the nine-meter height, there's no heights of walls, so we've tried to design it to not have those variances. So all in all, I do feel it's minor in nature, and I do believe it's certainly an appropriate development.
Okay, thank you, sir. Does the committee have any questions of the speaker? There being none, could I get a motion on this application, please?
Mr. Chair, the owner was also registered as a speaker, and they are also on the call. I'm not sure if perhaps they might, they wanted to add something or something.
I have a, Mr. Peter Blakely or Barbara Blakely, are you there?
Peter, you're unmuted.
I do not wish to speak.
Okay, can I get your full name and address, please?
I'm Peter Blakely, 67 Stibbert Avenue.
Okay, thank you, sir. Is there anything you're going to tell us that isn't contained in the material we've already heard from Mr. Sprague? Sir? You can speak, sir, but as.
No.
Oh, he doesn't want to speak, okay, thank you, sir. We'll go to, we'll go back to committee. Does the committee have any, there is no question. Can I get a motion on this application, please? Mr. Klassen?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chair. This is minor, it does meet all the four tests. I'd like to move to approve this application. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Klassen. Someone to second that? Ms. Sankar seconds, all those in favor? Opposed? Mr. Khan dissenting. That motion carries, sir. Your application's been approved without condition. Thank you, sir.
Great, thank you very much.
Thank you. Item number seven, 6B Stewart Avenue has been deferred. We are now on item number eight, 188 The Bridle Path. I have one person registered to speak, that's Shen Shu Zhang, Z-H-A-N-G. Are you there, sir?
Yes, hi, good morning. This is the chair and this is the committee members. I'm Shen Shu Zhang, architect, office located in 98 Scarce Dale Road, North York.
Okay, thank you, sir. I'm just going through your application here, I note that there is a report from Urban Forestry which recommends your application be refused as it requires removing a city-owned maple tree and a private pine tree. There was a report from City Planning dated the August the 4th, which is recommending reducing variance number four, and there's a Transportation Services condition, report of the 4th of August, which is no objections to your application subject to a condition. I just wanted to ask, sir, have you had the opportunity to review those reports?
I do.
You've read them, sir? Can you, can you speak up? It's hard to hear you.
Yes, yes, we have reviewed the report and discussed with the planner.
Okay, now, I'm just going to ask, sir, did the city planning report dated the 4th of August was recommending that you reduce variance number four, which is the lot coverage from 32.23% to less than 30%? Were you proposing to reduce the lot coverage?
Now, I'd like to explain why we choose this proposal. Now, I'd like to explain why we choose this proposed coverage.
Okay, all right, then. So if you'd like to do that, sir, but also address the comments from Urban Forestry, which is recommending that your application be refused.
Yeah, I'd like to start with the coverage. So we understand that the planner recommended to reduce the coverage to 30%, but we believe that the proposed 32.23 percentage percent is suitable for the lot because we have a neighbor only one block, one block away, which is 20 Cent Field Avenue. They proposed the total coverage of 43.99%, including the deck and porch in the rear yard. It's, the main building's coverage is 32.28%. And that lot area is 1,213 square meters. Our lot area is a corner lot with a lot area of 1,132. It's very seminal. And they have a GFA of 783 square meters. Our proposed GFA is 735 square meters. So I think that is a very, our proposed 32.23% coverage is appropriate. And we also talked to our neighbors, and yesterday we submitted six supporting letters from the neighbors, including two immediate neighbors in the east and the west side of our lot. So I think that's the reason why we believe what we proposed, the coverage is appropriate. And about the forestry issues, we like to discuss with them during building permit application.
Okay, thank you, sir. Does the committee have any questions of the speaker? There being none, could I get a motion on this application, please? Ms. Sankar?
Yeah, for you, Mr. Chair. I mean, I just wanted to say to the applicant that, you know, another house down the street receiving a specific lot coverage doesn't, you know, it doesn't set precedence for all applications as we're not really sure what was discussed in that committee hearing. So that's not precedence for me, but I'm willing to move forward with a motion on this application, and that is, I'm willing to approve this application, but I am going to make some changes, and I'm going to make it subject to the staff report of August 4th. And therefore, variance number, variance number four will be reduced to 30% as the lot coverage. It will be subject as well to the August 4th transportation report. There are conditions that are attached to that, and you've already been discussing with forestry, and I will make it subject to forestry as well. And that's my motion.
Okay, thank you. I have a motion for Ms. Sankar to approve, to revise the application, particularly variance number four, so that the proposed lot coverage is reduced from 32.23% to 30% of the lot area, and also subject to Urban Forestry and Transportation Services Condition. Can I get someone to second that motion? Mr. Khan seconds, all those in favor? That motion carries unanimously. Sir, your revised application has been approved. Variance number four has been modified to read the proposed lot coverage is 30% of the lot area, and your application is also subject to Urban Forestry and Transportation Services Condition. Well, thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
And we'll go to item number nine, which is 26 Dorking Crescent. I have one person registered to speak, that's Nicholas Primorano, P-R-I-M-E-R-A-N-O. Are you there, sir? Nicholas, are you there?
Hello? Yeah, Nicholas, I'm here.
I can hear you. Can I get your full name and address, please?
Nicholas Primorano, 26 Dorking Crescent, M3M2B6, Toronto, Ontario.
Great, thank you, sir. I'm just going through your applicant, your file here.
Yes.
I'm just going through your file, sir. I note that there's no staff comments or recommended conditions. We have two variances before us. Pretty clear what you're asking for, sir. Is there anything you'd like to tell the committee that isn't contained in the material we have before us this afternoon?
Uh, no, I think it's all there.
Okay, thank you. Does the committee have any questions of the speaker? There being none, could I get a motion on this application, please? Mr. Klassen?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chair. This is minor, it does meet the four tests. I'd like to move to approve this application.
Thank you, Mr. Klassen. Someone to second that? Ms. Sankar seconds, all those in favor? That motion carries unanimously. Sir, your application's been unanimously approved without condition.
All right, thank you very-
Thank you, sir. We're now on item number 10, 14 Longhome Place. I have one person registered to speak, that is Lauren Rose. Are you there, sir?
Yes, I am.
Yes, sir, thank you. I'm just going through your file. I note that there are a number of staff reports here. There's one from TRCA dated 4th of August. They have no objections to your application. There's Ravine and Natural Features Protection Report of the 4th of August. They have no objections to your application. And there's a City Planning Report dated 4th of August, which has no objections to your application subject to a condition that you build it according to plan. I just wanted to ask, sir, is there pretty clear what you're asking for with your variances? Is there anything you'd like to tell the committee that isn't contained in the material we have before us this afternoon?
No, that's fine. It's a very simple, small addition. I think it's pretty self-explanatory.
Okay, thank you, sir. Does the committee have any questions of the speaker? There being none, could I get a motion on this application, please? Mr. Khan?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Mr. Chair, I'm taking staff recommendation into consideration and there's suggesting proposal be developed substantially in accordance with the site plan drawings submitted to the Committee of Adjustment. Attachment number one to this report. This application be approved.
Thank you, Mr. Khan. Someone to second that? Ms. Sankar seconds, all those in favor? Motion carries unanimously. Mr. Rose, your application's been unanimously approved without condition, uh, subject to City Planning condition. Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Thank you. We're now on item number 11, 30 Brookfield Road. I have one person registered to speak, Richard Librak, the agent. Are you there, sir?
I am, yes.
Yes, sir, I'm just going through your file here. I'm just note that there were two reports on file with your application. There's one from Toronto Region Conservation Authority dated the 4th of August. They have no objections to your application. There's also Ravine and Natural Features Protection Report of the 4th of August, which has no objections to your application. I just noted, sir, is there anything pretty clear what you're asking for in the variance we have before us? Is there anything you'd like to tell the committee that isn't contained in the material we have before us this afternoon?
None other than simply the variance being sought is for the existing condition, and the work we're doing at the rear of the house will have no impact whatsoever on that. It'll be much lower than the existing house. So the work is a continuation over the existing footprint and the height variance we're seeking is really for the ridge of the existing house.
And I just wanted to ask, sir, the height of the building actually complies with the new bylaw, 569-2013?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. Does the committee have any questions of the speaker? Okay, thank you. Mr. Chu, I note that there's, the owners here are listed as wanting to speak. Do they still want to speak?
Peter, you're unmuted.
Hi, I did not intend to speak, thank you.
Okay, thank you. We have no further questions of the speaker. If I could get a motion on this application, please? Mr. Kidd?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. This is a minor variance, in my opinion. I'd like to put forward a motion to accept the application without conviction.
Thank you, Mr. Kidd. Someone to second that? Mr. Klassen seconds, all those in favor? That motion carries, thank you. Sir, your application's been unanimously approved without condition. We're now on item number 12, 1046 Rose Lawn Avenue. I have one person registered to speak, Tony Enriquez, are you there?
Yes, I am.
Can I get your full name and address, please, sir?
Yes, my name is Tony Enriquez, 543 Concord Avenue, Toronto, Ontario. And I'm the agent for this application.
Okay, thank you, sir. I note that there are no staff comments or conditions on file with your application. We have one variance before us from you, that's for lot area. It's pretty clear what you're asking for. Is there anything you'd like to tell the committee that isn't contained in the material we have before us this afternoon?
No.
Okay, thank you, sir. Does the committee have any questions of the speaker? There being none, could I get a motion on this application, please? Ms. Sankar?
Through you, Mr. Chair. I think that this is a minor application, does meet the four tests, and I'll motion to approve this application as is.
Thank you, Ms. Sankar. Someone to second that? Mr. Klassen seconds, all those in favor? That motion carries unanimously. Sir, your application's been unanimously approved without condition.
Thank you.
Thank you. We're now on item number 13, 62 Laurentide Drive. I have two people registered to speak. The agent is Ali Malak Zada, are you there?
Yes, Mr. Chair.
Yes, hello, sir. Can I get your full name and address, please?
My name is Ali Malik Zada, and from 236 Les Mill Road, Toronto, Ontario.
Okay, thank you, sir. I note that there are no staff comments or conditions on file with your application. If you would like to give us, because we have one other person registered to speak, if you'd like to give us a brief presentation on what you see as the merits of your proposal?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. We have almost a three-story building proposing as per permitted by bylaw. And I see that there was two objection or opposition letter on the file. I review them, I understand their concern about the balcony and then the height, I'm just explaining the balcony. We have existing, sorry, we have overlooking or overhanging space from the second-floor master bedroom to the backyard, which is covering the back deck. And that is going to be a flat roof that is covering the deck. So we use that one as the balcony of the second floor from the master bedroom. If I can ask, they can show the second-floor plan? I really appreciate.
Sir, can you keep up with your presentation?
Yes, that's, that's, as you see on the second floor, we have that balcony, which is exactly the flat roof and canopy over the rear deck. And then we're using it as a balcony. So the amount and the square footage of that balcony is over four meters. This is one of the variances we have. And the overall height, if I can, if they can show the front elevations as well. We are allowed to have 9.5 meters under the new bylaw. And what we are asking is a 9-point, just foot and a half higher than the permitted bylaw. And then that is just because of the one foot that we are having for the third floor as a nine feet. And then the rest is the parapet in order to manage the flat roof and then the surface water of the flat roof on the third floor. So I think it's very minor in nature in the height. Regarding to the item number five, which is the height over from the, according to the existing bylaw, the old bylaw, we have to be 9.5 meters. But there is a difference between the average grade and the center, the crown, the crown of the road, elevation of the almost two feet. And then that is impacting to the overall height under the old bylaw in this case, which is showing 10.45, 41. These are also concerned from the letter that is registered on the file, and I just wanted to explain each one of them. Thank you so much.
Okay, thank you, sir. Does the committee have any questions of the speaker? There being none, I'll go to the next person on the list. I have a Tom Cullen, C-U-L-L-E-N. Are you there, sir?
Today. Can you hear me okay?
Yes, I can hear you, sir. Can I get your full name and address, please?
Sure, it's Tom Cullen, C-U-L-L-E-N. I live just down the street and across from this site. We've lived in the neighborhood about 30 years.
Sir, can I get your address?
Oh, I beg your pardon. It's 1 Parmbell Crescent, P-A-R-M-B-E-L-L-E Crescent, Toronto, M3A3G5.
Yeah, please proceed.
Yeah, so we've, thank you. We've lived in the neighborhood about 30 years. In fact, our house is the plan of the existing building on, at 62 Laurentide. I guess the first point I'd make in general is the variances are not minor. There is an excess of 10% coverage beyond the permitted value of, in terms of coverage. There's more than double the permitted area of the second-story balconies. 250% of the permitted area of balconies. And the height excesses are about 5% and 10% in items, variances four and five. So overall, they're certainly not minor with respect to the maximums. It's, the proposal is not desirable to the community or fitting with the neighborhood. And apparently, no attempt has been made to stay within the maximums. The maximums are maximums. They're designed to be that way, to keep things in order. And as I say, no effort seems to be made. In Chapter Four of the Development, Regarding Development and the City Plan, the main criteria, although it's a long document, as you well know, is the stability of neighborhoods is key to Toronto's success. And in summary, proposals must fit the existing physical character of the neighborhood. This would be the very first three-story building in the, down in our neighborhood, to my knowledge. There are some larger homes, there's been a lot of infill, but certainly this is an excess of the neighborhood. One administrative point I will draw to the attention is my wife did also send a letter on August 3rd, before the deadline, and I noticed it is not included in the file, in the website, although two other objection letters are. Another point is that the nature of the new driveway of this location with a circular-style drive will reduce the amount of street parking- style drive will reduce the amount of street parking, as there are now two driveways to the facility instead of one. So it reduces the amount of street access. And presumably, also with that amount of landscaping, increases the rain runoff to the street as opposed to absorption, which is part of city protocol to have our rain go into the properties where it falls. So, in summary, the general intent and purpose is, my understanding is your guidelines, the general intended purpose would not be met, either the zoning, the bylaws, or the official plan. Of the four criteria specified, of which the committee must be satisfied, none have been met by this application. And hence, it should be denied in every respect in which it exceeds the good sense and sound limitations of the code, bylaws, and city's official plan. Otherwise, what's the point of planning? Thank you for your attention.
Thank you. Does the committee have any questions of the speaker? There being none, we'll go back to the agent. Are you there, sir?
Yes.
Sir, you've heard the comments from the previous speaker. If you'd like to reply to them, please?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. The bylaw is allowing to have a three-story building in this area. And regarding to the character of the proposed, the plan and then design, there is number of the house and then property in this area that they are built in a modern nature, architecture, and then they are three-story. Their closest one is number 77 Laurentide Drive, that is built a couple of years ago. And then our office done a couple of houses in this area, not on Laurentide, on the other street, that this committee approved the similar, the variances on those applications as well. So the character of the proposed design is there in the neighborhood. And there is the repeated design in that area. Going, moving forward for the, some of the variants that the neighbor, they think that they are not, they are not minor, and then they are major. The height is very minor, and then there is already approval, same for other application. And in terms of the square footage, again, is it 3% over? Is, I don't know what is the breakpoint for the being minor or major in these variances. But we think this is very minor in the nature. We didn't have any comment from the city staff based on the variance that we have. And regarding to the, to the front circular driveway, transportation didn't have any comment or any objection according to that. In terms of the managing the surface water, definitely, we are going to have the grading plan that is going to be reviewed by the city and an engineering department. If there is any issue, definitely, we are going to address them at the time of the permit. Again, I think that the, this proposal is meet for exercise of the official plan and is minor in nature.
Okay, thank you, sir. Does the committee have any questions of the speaker? There being none, could I get a motion on this application, please? Ms. Sankar?
Through you, Mr. Chair. You know, and I do hear what the Debbie Johnson said, but I accept the explanations provided by the applicant here today, such that my motion is to approve this application, as is. Thank you.
Thank you. Someone to second, Mr. Klassen, seconds. All those in favor? The motion carries unanimously. Sir, your application's been unanimously approved without condition. Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Thank you. We're on item number 1427 Playfair Avenue. I have one person registered to speak. That's Eddie Perez. Are you there, sir?
Yeah, can you hear me?
Yes, I can hear you, Mr. Perez. Can I get your full name and address, please?
Hey, my full name is Eddie Perez, EKP Designs, 537 Rogers Road.
Okay, thank you, sir. Just going through your application, I note that there are no staff comments or conditions listed on file with your application. I think it's pretty clear what you're asking for in the variances, the variances we have before us. It's pretty clear what you're asking for. Is there anything you'd like to tell the committee that isn't contained in the material we have before us this afternoon?
Yeah, it's like you said, the variances are minor. They're little over. And as the side yard is on just the one side, to accommodate the driveway to go back and forth easier. And it's in keeping with the area. There's a lot of 1.2 meters in the area for the bungalows. So we feel that this application is appropriate and is very minor in nature. Thank you very much.
Thank you, sir. Does the committee have any question of the speaker? There being none, could I get a motion, please? Mr. Klassen?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chair. This is minor. It does meet all the four tests. I'd like to move to approve this application.
Thank you, Mr. Klassen. Someone to second that? Mr. Khan, seconds. All those in favor? That motion carries unanimously. Mr. Perez, your application's been unanimously approved without condition. Thank you, sir.
Thank you very much. Have a good day.
Okay, thank you. We're on item number 1625 Haddington Avenue, which has been deferred. We are now on, I'm sorry, item number 15, 168 Briar Hill Avenue. I'm sorry, item number 15, 168 Briar Hill Avenue. I have one person registered to speak. That's David Eagleman. Are you there, sir?
Yes. Good afternoon, sir, Chair and committee members.
Yes, can I get your full name and address, please, sir?
Yes, through you, Mr. Chair. My name is David Eagleman, 900 The East Mall Suite 300. And I am a planner here on behalf of the owner.
Yes, thank you, sir. Just going through your application, I note that there are a couple of reports on file. There's one from Urban Forestry, recommended condition. And there's a report from Transportation Services dated August 4th, which has no objection subject to the proposed landscaping in the mutual right-of-way with 172 Briar Hill Avenue be maintained with the existing type of material. I just wanted to know, sir, have you had the opportunity to review those reports?
Yes, through you, Mr. Chair. I have reviewed those reports. And the conditions from both departments are acceptable.
Okay, thank you, sir. It's pretty clear what you're asking for in your application. I just wanted to ask, is there anything you'd like to tell the committee, sir, that isn't contained in the material we have before us this afternoon?
Through you, Mr. Chair. I, we did revise the variances and the plans that we are asking for. There is a revised set of plans, a revised waiver, and a cover letter that have been submitted to go through the changes. But if you would like, Mr. Chair, I can verbally amend the public notice.
Okay, can you tell us what changes you'd like to make?
Yes. So through you, Mr. Chair, variance number one, the building length, has been reduced to 17.3 meters.
Okay, so that's, right now, it reads the proposed building length is 18.31 meters. You're reducing that to 17.3 meters?
Correct.
Okay, what's next?
The building depth has also been reduced to 17.3 meters. That's variance number two.
Okay, thank you.
Variance number three, the proposed FSI has been reduced to 0.7 times the lot area.
And that's been reduced from 0.74?
Correct.
Okay.
Variance number four, sorry, go ahead.
No, go ahead. Variance number four?
Variance number four is unchanged.
Okay, stays the same? Okay.
Variance number five, again unchanged.
Okay.
Variance number six, the proposed eve setback, which was at 0.1 meters to the east side lot line, has been increased or improved to 0.23 meters.
Okay, thank you.
And the driveway width variance number seven has remained unchanged.
Okay, thank you. Thank you.
And through you, Mr. Chair, I would just like to note that those revisions to the plans and variances are a result of extensive discussions with both immediately adjacent neighbors. And it was to their satisfaction, as indicated in their submitted letter.
Okay, thank you, sir. So just to go through this again, your variance number one, which is the proposed building length of 18.31 meters, has been reduced to 17.3 meters. Variance number two, proposed building depth of 18.31 meters has been reduced to 17.3 meters. Variance number three, the floor space index of 0.74 times has been reduced to 0.70. And variance number six, the proposed eaves are 0.1 meters from the east lot line has been increased from 0.1 meters to 0.23 meters. Again.
That is correct.
Okay, thank you, sir. Does the committee have any questions of the speaker? There being none, could I get a motion on this revised application, please? Mr. Khan?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Mr. Chair, I'm going to move this application be, although there is no staff recommendation, and changes have been made, and modification has been quoted by yourself and the agent, by move that this application be approved, subject to the forestry conditions.
And there's also a transportation services condition?
That's right, sir. They have no objection.
Okay, thank you. Does the, someone to second, Mr. Khan?
Also, Urban Forestry, too.
Yes, Urban Forestry, thank you. Someone to second, Mr. Khan's motion? So Mr. Khan has a motion to approve the revised application subject to Urban Forestry and Transportation Services condition?
That's right, sir. That's right.
Someone to second that? Mr. Klassen, seconds. All those in favor? That motion carries unanimously. Sir, Mr. Eagleman, your revised application's been unanimously approved subject to Urban Forestry and Transportation Services conditions.
Thank you, Mr. Chair and committee.
Thank you. Item number 1625 Haddington Avenue has been deferred. We're now on item number 1795 Sherwood Avenue. I have one person registered to speak. That is Frank Bellini. Are you there, sir?
Yes, I am. This is Frank.
Can I get your full name and address, please?
Sure. It's Frank Bellini, 202A Oakdale Avenue, Toronto.
Okay, thank you, sir. Just going through your file, I note there are no staff comments or recommended conditions on file. You have one variance before us relating to front yard setback. It's very clear what you're asking for. I just wanted to ask, sir, is there anything you'd like to tell the committee that isn't contained in the material we have before us this afternoon?
No, I don't.
Okay, thank you. If I could, is there any, does the committee have any questions of the speaker? There being none, could I get a motion on this application, please? Mr. Klassen?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chair. This is minor. It does meet the four tests. I'd like to move to approve this application.
Okay, thank you, sir. Someone to second that motion? Ms. Sankar, seconds. All those in favor? Motion carries unanimously. Mr. Bellini, your application's been approved without condition. Thank you, sir.
Thank you very much.
We have last item of our morning session, 515 Glengarry Avenue. It's item number 18. I have the agent Navaz Fuladzari. Are you there?
Yes.
Yes, can I get your full name and address, please?
Yes, my name is Navaz Fuladzari, and my address is 27 Diva Day, and I'm the agent.
Okay, thank you. Madam, I'm just going through your application. I note the only comments we have from staff is a recommended condition from Urban Forestry. It's pretty clear what you're asking for, I think. But we have one other person registered to speak. So if you'd like to give the committee a brief presentation on what you see as the merits of your proposal?
Yeah, sure. Thank you. So I'm representing the owners of 515 Glengarry Avenue. The owners are, of this property are Mr. David Cole and Mrs. Esther Cole. They are seniors and they are in their 70s. So this thing backyard deck is too small for them to accommodate occasional meals with the family. They have two children, their spouses, and four grandchildren. They're with, so there are not enough space for them to locate a dining table. And now they have their meals with their family on the backyard level patio. So they have to, so this patio is 2.2 meter lower than the main floor. And they have to step down and then climb up 15 steps each and every time that they want to carry the food from the kitchen to the backyard level. So they reasonably anticipate that this difficulty will become more pronounced as they age. So they decided to change the design of this, this actually deck. In the design process, the shape of the deck and the stairs layout have been changed in a way that not includes the existing backyard landscape. With this design, they can entertain with their family in the same level as the main floor and the kitchen. So please note, the building rear wall has a significant setback from the east and this neighbor's rear walls. And having said, this new deck will not extend further than the last step of the existing deck, as you can see in these documents. And also, just the layout of the stairs changed in order to locate a dining table and having a good area for them. And also, this proposed deck will be behind the neighbor's existing decks and even further, they are further more than this deck. So respectfully, I'm asking this committee to consider my client's age and needs to renew this backyard deck to a better and more practical one. Thank you for your time.
Okay, thank you, madam. Does the committee have any questions of the speaker? There being none, I'll go to the next person on the list. I have Judith Greenspan. Are you there, madam?
Everything toast, jammed toast. They have wraps, barbecue chicken wrap, tuna wrap.
Judith, you're unmuted.
Ms. Greenspan?
It doesn't look like you'll eat anything there.
Can I get your full name and address, please? Ms. Greenspan?
Okay, where do you want to go? We can go somewhere very like nothing, like not expect. So that's why I looked at IQ, but I don't think there's anything there you'll eat.
Judith, you're unmuted.
Ms. Greenspan, can you hear us? Can I get your full name and address, please?
It is, it's just an IQ code, Dad. It's not a...
I think we're listening to a private conversation. Maybe she should be muted. She did leave a letter on file for us to review as well.
And just, yeah, thank you, Ms. Sankar. We'll try and get a hold of her.
Judith, you are now unmuted.
I'm sorry about that. I didn't realize it came up.
Ms. Greenspan, can I get your full name and address, please?
It's Judith Greenspan, 513 Glengarry Avenue.
Okay, thank you. If you'd like to give us...
I know that, yeah, my neighbors are building some sort of variance on a deck in the back, but they did some extensive planning with a, with the surveyors. And I just wanted to be, I had concerns about how this is going to impact my property lines. And I just wanted to be, I had concerns about how this is going to impact my property lines. And also the sloping, because our properties are on a down slope. So I just wanted to be sure that there is no change because I was not given a copy of the, of the most updated survey plan that was done. In fact, they were quite aggressive, confrontational, and rude in their approach to doing this. So it wasn't done in a neighborly fashion. And I wasn't, although I was offered a copy, I was never received a copy of the new survey. So I just want to make sure that my existing property lines were not changed in any way. And I wasn't sure if I had to go and then get my own property survey done.
Okay, thank you, madam. I'll refer, well, the applicants' agent can respond to those when they come back up on, in their follow-up presentation. Does the committee have any questions of the speaker? There being none, we'll go back to the agent. Are you there, madam?
Yes, I'm here.
You've heard the comments from Ms. Greenspan? If you'd like to reply to them, please?
Yes, correct. First of all, I should thank Mrs. Greenspan, my client, respectful neighbor, for her time and the explanation. I should say that I'm sorry to hear about the problem and what happens with the surveyor. Based on the new survey, which was asked from committee to be provided, despite the encroachment of common existing fence to my client's property on both east and west side, I believe this matter does not relevant to the subject of this committee. And as far as I know, my client doesn't have any concern about the fence encroachment and the location of the property line at this moment. And you need to note that the proposed deck has nothing to do with the location of the fences. And it will be exactly the same location as the existing one is. Just the layout changed, as I explained. And you could see in the documents that I provided. I can assure the respectful neighbor that even during the construction process of renewing this deck, the contractor won't need to access or pass to or from their properties because there is enough space for to reach to the backyard to do this new deck. That's all. And thank you for your attention.
Okay, thank you. Does the committee have any questions of the speaker? There being none, could I get a motion on this application, please? Mr. Klassen?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chair. I listened to the applicant and the neighbor. And this does seem to be minor and seems to be well, well-designed. So I, and is in keeping with the four tests. So I'd like to move to approve this application and make it subject to Urban Forestry.
Thank you, Mr. Klassen. Summon the second, Mr. Klassen's motion? Ms. Sankar seconds. All those in favor? That motion carries unanimously. Madam, your application's been unanimously approved subject to Urban Forestry conditions.
Thank you so much.
Thank you. That ends our morning session. We will be back at 2:00 PM. See you then.